I'm Adam Winkler. My name is Adam Winkler, I'm a senior faculty advisor at our school. I was born in Mexico, but my very early childhood was raised in Michigan. I'm a young Spanish boy and currently a CTE student persisting at Blackwood. I was recruited in the state teachers' convention. I'm a teacher at the 12th Central Office staff on several of the district current initiatives. My spirit and my system with the connection that the town stretch and school live up like proud features from our school community. I also believe that the testing of myself while it encourages students to participate. Currently my favorite subjects are history and studies of science. I plan to graduate at the time to graduate from original or junior senior level. Teenager in Madison, Alabama. Well, I've noticed that they have a certain degree of expectation that you're presenting.
Would you like to leave us then for the questions please?
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
I do have one change, Madam Chair, and that is to move item 4.09, receive for action the renewal of the RCEH charter to file 4.01. And that is the only change I have this evening.
Can I have a motion, yeah, Ms. Gibson?
I'd like to change the agenda to also include an item to discuss the senior auditor position.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the... Do I need a second, Ms. Gibson? Can I get a second for Ms. Gibson's?
A second.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the addition of a discussion for, on the school board senior auditor for...
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
You don't need a roll call, you just need a unanimous vote and all in favor. And the motion was made by Ms. Gibson. The motion was made by Ms. Gibson and it was seconded by Ms. Owen. All in favor of adopting the agenda as amended? Any opposed? The agenda has been adopted as amended. The next item is, the discussion of senior auditor position will go under Board Business, so that will be 3.01. The next item is item 1.04, approve the minutes of the April 15th Board meeting. Those minutes were distributed to you as well as posted on Board Doc. I did not receive any changes, so I just ask that you approve them at this time.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from April 15th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Next item?
The next item is to your public information, I only have one speaker who signed up in advance. What is your pleasure, Madam Chair?
Let's hear the speaker that signed up in advance and then we'll hear everyone else. Just as a reminder, if you are speaking as an individual, you will have three minutes. If you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you will have five minutes. Please only allow one person to speak on behalf of your organization. And just be reminded to sign in and state your name for the record. Also, remember, there's no applause, but we can wave our hands if we're excited. And just note that we on the Board do not respond during public comments. So someone from the administration will be following up with you if you have something that needs immediate follow-up. Thank you.
Caitlin Robbins.
Tonight I have been afforded an opportunity to speak, however brief an opportunity may come.
I'm sorry, please stay back.
Caitlin Robbins.
Thank you.
And I've been racking my brain trying to come up with a way to use the short amount of time to address you. I am a teacher at Richmond Career Education Employment Academy and I'm going to afford you with some of my own time to think about the opportunities you were given in life. Maybe there were things that opened up new pathways based on past successes. Maybe there were second chances following great mistakes. Or perhaps there were serendipitous moments where simply being who you are at the right moment in time came to reward you. Some of you may believe in equity of opportunity. Some of you may believe that merit defines outcomes. I believe you all can understand can be no success where there is no opportunity to succeed. I would ask you now to consider where you could find yourself had the opportunities were, you were afforded, had never come to you. If the second chances were never offered, if serendipity had never graced you, what merit would you stand on if you were never given the chance to show your worth to others? Disability in a human being is, in all its forms, knows no bounds, it has no limits. It gives no quarter, though when ignored, it does take prisoners. It may yet come for you, for me, for our loved ones, it may have already. For those who have been touched by it, that quiet struggle can be lifelong. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, of ten adults with a disability of any kind, only two are able to find and hold a job. Mr. Camaras and school board members, there are ten of you here now. Would you care to be part of the eight that are unable to demonstrate their merit? Would you care to do something for your eight colleagues to lower that number if you were able? There are X number of programs for students without disabilities currently offered by our district. This is understandable, given the ratio of students with disabilities to those without. But in a district with so few opportunities for a population that faces 20% chance of finding post-high school employment and the dignity that comes with it, with all the opportunity that has been afforded to you and with a superintendent who seeks to focus on equity, I urge you to think as hard as possible about what equity of opportunity can come from denying one chance. Just one chance to walk a path that allows them to demonstrate their merit to the world. IBAP, dual enrollment tech center, military academy, governor's school, open high, real school are some of the programs Richmond is working on and is proud of. Transition is something that's amended by IDEA, but what really is the focus? RCA has a partnership with many community businesses, areas. We have been with T-TAC, Video E, we've had someone come from Australia and yet no one knows about us. We are an innovative program that is not offered anywhere else. And I just ask that you please renew us for the three years that we are wanting. Thank you.
If anybody else would like to speak, they can now line up and just remember to sign in and state your name.
Good evening, Board Members, Administration. My name is Steve Wilborn and I am here this evening representing the Education Committee of the Richmond branch and WACP. I serve as Chair of that committee. We are happy to see that the City Council approved the, or appropriated the requested funding for 2019-2020. But we have some lingering questions concerning especially the strategic plan. I've expressed those lingering concerns before, but we continue to get questions about them, so I brought, bring them before you. And these concerns are moving forward, especially with the strategic plan. For instance, how will the work of the elimination of the 20 attendance officers be realized? The 17 that were employed at the time the decision was made and the three that were listed as vacant. So the 20 attendance officers who will now be called liaisons, and as I understand it, you're hiring seven to replace the 20 or so that is being eliminated. We don't have that information, we don't know if those positions will be enhanced, so we don't know what they will do and if they will do all of the work that the 20 or so attendance officers did. More information is always better than less information and we feel that this information, sharing what the enhancement of the liaison officers will be doing, was critical information that we need basically to know because we have the same goals of making sure that our students and our school system is successful, but we need the information also shared with us as well as the public. Secondly, will strategies and an action plan be included with the baseline data and targets that is listed as being shared with us about the strategic plan this summer? We're entering the second year of the strategic plan and we have no idea what the strategies are nor the action plan that goes with the strategic plan and the goals. We have no clue what that is. So we are not here as an adversary, but we have to ask the difficult questions and we need the questions answered. You school board members are ultimately responsible to the people based on the outcome of strategic plans since you approved it and so we want to make sure that we have all of the information that we need in order to make informed decisions about the strategic plan and moving forward. So I thank you and hopefully those answers will come forward.
My name is Andre Mattingly and I'm currently the Multimeter Production Manager of RPS and I will be speaking on behalf of the dislocated workers of RPS. As of today's date, we, the dislocated workers of RPS, still have not received updates per our benefit package, status of our positions, nor letters of intent as it pertains to our positions. We learned during the rapid response that some of our services that are offered by the state cannot be provided to us until we have proof that we will be without jobs in the coming future. Contrary to what Mr. Camaras has, would lead you to believe, the two rapid response sessions, while informative, were not helpful. We learned that unemployment pays at the least $67 a week and at the most, just over $300. These services last only for six months and we have to apply every week in order to get them renewed. This and other information doesn't answer major questions such as how will the layoffs affect our taxes? Can those of us who qualify retire early? When do we get our letters of intent? Basic questions such as when and to whom do we turn in our RPS equipment, including keys, phones, and computers? Perhaps this administration, had this administration sent members of the senior team to the rapid response sessions or bothered to show up themselves, some, if not all, these questions could have been answered. This administration says that it has found positions for some of the dislocated. We'd like to know how and how many and of course, what about the rest of us? To whom do we speak about this? It is sad that we have to hastily piece together our own fates and plan our lives based on rumors, half-truths, uncertainties, because this administration is doing the very minimum to help us and to keep us informed. All we ask is for one meeting with the administration as well as the senior team to help resolve these issues. School board members, you have a morale problem in RPS. While higher salaries, newer schools, increased attendance, and the school rezoning are all great, you need to understand that there is a disconnect. These 74 layoffs as well as the 10 principals that are at risk of losing their positions make people afraid to work at RPS. Mr. Camaras' words of equity and his love of RPS ring hollow when compared to his actions. Over the past several weeks, I have received several phone calls and had over 30 people visit my office. These are staff members, teachers, parents, and students, all of whom have expressed concern as to what's happening with our school system. While this is a small, while this is a small sampling, it makes one wonder how many others feel the way that we do. I've advised everyone that I spoke with to reach out to the registration because of our collective voices and I heard changes when that occurred. Lastly, I'd like to remind the Board of some of the things that I have planned in the future. I have planned to create, or I had planned within the first 18 months of my new studio to generate $10,000, with the goal of bringing in $30,000 within five years, closer to three and a half years. I know I can do this because I've done this before. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening all. Tonight I'm here to speak on two items and my name is Betsy Hoben. First, I'm glad to see that the foundational work to make sure students attain the education that corresponds with the Virginia High School diploma that they receive is being done with fidelity and thought. The clear work plans will produce a correct transcript and therefore a correct GPA. The foundational systems processes were always my main point. So thank you to all who have worked to ensure student diplomas are backed by real and accurate data as this benefits all students moving forward. And as a sad note, side note, hopefully I will never be standing in front of you to rant about transcripts, GPAs, and foundational systems and academic data management again. My second point, middle school. My second point is middle school. Since 2014, I have noticed the scheduling issues for each of my middle school students and the issues have only grown worse. Last fall, a full eight months ago and a school year ago, I stood before you all in September and spoke of not having physical education classes, an unbalanced elective choice, and issues within core courses. I was not the only parent who voiced concerns and these concerns were voiced at all levels within RPS. In reading the video report concerning Albert Hill in the winter and the current proposal in front of the school board tonight, I feel the proposal falls very short. My youngest child, he turns 13 today, will go into the next school year just as he has gone into the last two middle school years. With having to make a choice on his four-year electives, he will have to make a decision whether to take art, band, or language, but not two of those. He will lose opportunities. These are dreams deferred. This applies to not only my child, but all RPS children. This proposal states it is now too late this year to address issues that have been known for many years. It is discouraging to think that how many of these systemic issues which relate to transportation credit, electives, and schedules are simply put off month after month. Yes, there is a cost to aligning middle schools and this was known before the budget was created. When the budget was being created, I stood here and asked you to consider this cost. No one did. This issue does not need to be studied, the issue is known, the solution is known. Do the hard work and fund middle school resources, stop kicking the can, create the knowing strong foundations for Richmond Public Middle Schools. Rest assured, parents like me will continue to put schools in the honorable and work to ensure equity and compliance. As of today at 6:04 PM, I have lonely adult children and teenagers in my house.
30 seconds.
As parents, we know our time with our children is limited and we will not put off investing in their education. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Ansley Perkins. I literally blew a gasket as I drove up 95 last Tuesday when a friend notified me that the education compact meeting was being held that evening. I don't recall reading the rescheduled date in the superintendent's weekly message. I don't remember reading it in the live Twitter feed from RVA Council meeting the night before. As a community member, these meetings are challenging. Presentations are frequently not shared prior to the meeting, sometimes still not at the meeting. The trend towards breakout groups is not conducive to the community listening in and that feels somewhat intentional. But this is the tool we currently have. These meetings are a critical opportunity for you and your counterparts on council to ask questions, request information, et cetera. I spoke before council a few months ago about their collective dismal attendance at these meetings. While I was not able to attend last Tuesday's meeting, it was my understanding that at 6:30 PM, there were three people in attendance who did not have to be there. Communication needs to be multimodal and should be at least a week before said rescheduled meeting. This is not unique to compact meetings. We have to do better. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. My name is David Jones, president of the Joff Foundation. I know you see me a lot, so you know, Joff Foundation consists of TJ, you can add John Marshall, Strongwood, all our other faculties. So, two issues tonight can bring great news, good news to me because I believe God can do things that's never been done before. So, two things that won't cost RPS a dime, but will change the lives of many of our young men and women in the Joff Foundation. First, we want to do suits, first for our young men. If you have anybody in your district, anybody that you know, a young man that needs a suit, he can contact me, he'll contact one of our representatives and he will be awarded a suit. If it's not a full suit, it'll be a pants with jacket. So, graduation coming up, other things, if any young man needs it, he will be awarded those things. Second, the next one is challenged, but I believe it can be done, especially if every school board member agrees. You know, you can't answer this question, but you probably can answer it if you could. When's the last time any one of those high schools won a city championship or state championship? Football, you said basketball, yeah, John Marshall, you know. But football, baseball, tennis? So, for us, the Joff Foundation, I spoke with a lot of young men, a lot of coaches and a lot of parents. We feel like for the first time in Richmond history, we should have a city championship. City championship game played when we played Thanksgiving weekend, that when we're off, starting with the football teams, it will be the two teams that has the highest or the best record for the year. Each team, each team will receive awards, but the winning team will receive a Richmond City championship jacket and their team will receive a trophy that they keep for the year and to the next year. All proceeds will go to athletic department and most of all scholarships to, not just colleges, but to technical centers, to trade schools, to the things that we believe that, like I said, if you got 40 kids sitting in front of you, five may go to college, what are the rest to do? So if we can get those kids to pick up trades and all, that'd be a great thing. And I just believe morally and it would give these kids something to play for, something to look forward to, something to say all year long, we're fighting to be the city champions of Richmond. So I believe if every school board member agrees with me and puts forth effort, we can get this done and we can call it a non-sanctioned game. I've been through VHSAL and I spoke with several people from there and it's just like playing the All-Star game, but it's basically a city game. I know for a fact, Mr. Camaras, that y'all did it in DC. I did my history, I did my homework and it was a great event that I've seen from the news and the things that I've studied from in DC that y'all did. So, again, we've been in three years now. We're looking forward to the next annual third city summit for our young men coming up in August, we hope. And we pray that this works out, that we can announce it at the city summit with all these teams there. And each team will be able to walk out of their room knowing that they have something to play for and that the city believes in them in some way or another. So again, consider it, think about it, I'm praying for you, I'm praying that we can make this happen. I'm listening.
Good evening, my name is Ted Lewis and I represent Side by Side, formerly Roseme. We work with lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning youth ages 11 to 20 since 1991. I want to thank the Board and the Superintendent for their inclusion of LGBTQ students in the dreams for RPS as well as in the changes to the score. And the reason I'm rising today is to ask you to consider two additional changes to the score publication. One is around creating a chosen name policy for students in our school system. We work with over 400 unique youth every year. Most of them are from the Richmond area and I can tell you that according to their own self-reports, between 60 to 70% of the kids we see have said yes, they've seriously thought about killing themselves in the last six months. To be quite frank with you, I'm trying to keep our kids alive and I need your help with that. A research study came out in March of 2018 done by Dr. Stephen Russell out of the University of Texas Austin that found when teachers and adults consistently use a chosen name of a transgender student, it dramatically changes their mental health. In fact, the study found that 71% had fewer symptoms of depression, 34% had decrease in suicidal thoughts, and 65% had a decrease in suicide attempts simply by using a student's chosen name. The good news is, we already do this. My legal name is Theodore and I'm a proud student of Virginia, though sadly not RPS. And I never went to class and was told that no one would call me Ted because that's what I go by. So we already use chosen names in the classroom already. What students and families and teachers are asking for is that we create some sort of method for families to be able to notify the school of what chosen name the child's going to be using, if it differs from their legal name, and to ensure that teachers respect that and use that consistently in the classroom and throughout the school. Again, that can be a lifesaving change that costs the school nothing. And again, schools that we talk to are looking for guidance from this board of how to best do that. The second piece is a little trick here, I won't lie, because I never thought in my life I would spend so much time talking about bathrooms, but when you talk about transgender people, bathrooms seem to constantly come up. I'm not here to tell you that it's going to be easy, but I am here to tell you that what we see with the youth that come to our center is quite scary. We see youth that refuse to drink or eat all day long because they're afraid to go to the bathroom in school. We have students that are told they can only go to the bathroom in the nurse's office, which is some kinds located on the opposite side or in a whole other building from where their classes are. Transgender students are often ostracized, they're often bullied, and they're often left out of discussions around equity. And so we're asking you to think thoughtfully about how can a transgender student actively participate in their school by doing something as simple as going to a bathroom that aligns with their identity? I'm sure your attorney can tell you that there's growing case law that supports transgender students being allowed to use the bathroom that corresponds with their gender identity, including the case that went all the way to the Supreme Court of Gavin Grimm versus Gloucester County Public Schools. We're asking that you consider a policy that would allow transgender students to use the bathroom that corresponds with their identity as well as provides training and technical assistance to schools to increase the bathrooms that are single use, single use and gender neutral for not only our students, but their families as well. Side by side, we'd be honored to continue to work with RPS as a partner. We're looking forward to continue training with many of your schools and we hope that we can continue to work with this board on the score documents. Again, we want to thank you for already taking the steps to be inclusive and ask that you please consider a chosen name policy and a bathroom policy because your schools are looking for some guidance. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members and everyone in their respective places. Thank you for taking the time to listen to and deliberate on a matter I most certainly wish had never occurred and brought us to this point. I am Malcolm Solomon, a former educator for Richmond Public Schools until resigning in June 2018, and a substitute teacher also until earlier this year, when the decision was made to ban me from RPS facilities, a request made by Principal of Schimborazo Elementary. While I believe it is our responsibility to grapple in earnest with the serious matter, I do not believe an honest assessment of the facts had been taken into account as the execution of my banning was ordered. For example, a staff member writes in a letter to the Principal of Schimborazo Elementary that I spoke negatively about the school personnel in Schimborazo Elementary on my Instagram page. However, this footage was not presented to me before or after the decision to ban. Am I not entitled to speak freely about the correct or incorrectness that happens in our education system without repercussion? If not, then who is? Furthermore, the Principal of Schimborazo Elementary never divulged with me the reasons for executing his decision. I'm in no position to extract this information from him, but would love to understand why. My mother is a teacher, now a school administrator. My aunt graduated with a master's degree. Her aunt was also an educator. There is practically an education degree in every central family under our broader family tree. I say that to emphasize that I come from a family of individuals with a passion for teaching. I love teaching, and I love my students, and will never intentionally leave them stranded. In fact, the very suggestion as outlined in the letter supported by Principal of Schimborazo Elementary flies in the face of my teaching philosophy and commitment to my students. I strive daily to be a positive role model for all my students. Especially, I especially try to demonstrate a level of professionalism that encourages and inspires their best behaviors. The staff member's letter goes out of its way to misrepresent the facts, as my character and ethics are viciously and unfairly attacked while ignoring my positive performance as an educator and my determination to ensuring that my students are achieving high academic performance. I am not the person the staff member presents in this letter. I am a person who loves his students, loves his parents, and I do not deserve to be banned in this fashion. I ask the Board to stand with parents, students, and the facts and lift the ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Morale Fields. I'm a parent of a student who attends the Richmond Career Education and Employment Academy. I am very proud and pleased with what I'm seeing at that school for my child. I would love to continue to see that growth. I'm adamant and very excited about what I'm seeing, and I want it to continue, pretty much so. I'm a taxpayer, and I feel like she deserves what every kid in the city is getting. She is a vulnerable child, and she needs what they are putting in place so she can be successful. We have no place for everyone else. I see that you're wrong the ball with this and continue to do something wonderful. Other children who are at need, please continue to keep that school open. Please continue to fight for the kids who cannot fight for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Sekara Manuel, and I'm here on behalf of my son, Rashad Gibson, and he also attends Richmond Community Education and Employment Academy. And I would like to say that he's been going there for one year, and from what I have seen there at that school, he has flourished very well at that school. They have helped him to do a lot of things that he have not done at regular schools with Richmond Public Schools. And that school have done a lot of things that he have not or would not be able to do. And I feel that if he closed that school, he would not have the opportunities to do with other kids. My son was very sheltered in Richmond Public Schools and basic schools, and now by him going there, he's able to open up, to interact with other kids, and communicate a lot better. If he closed that school, I'm afraid of what could happen with my son, and he would not have the opportunities to do things that other kids are able to do. Kids with disabilities, with autism, are not able to have the same opportunities. And I feel that we have a lot of schools that are shut down currently right now that don't have the ability to do things. I mean, in my neighborhood right now, schools are closed, and there's nothing for kids to do. So, if you closed this school, this charter school, what are the kids with the disabilities going to do? And I feel it's not fair. They need every opportunity, just like any kids with our disability. So, please do not close this school, and please give them every opportunity a child with our disability can have. Thank you.
Mr. Cameron, I'm the Chair and the Members of School Board. It's good to see so many of you all that haven't seen before, and to the new staff that I have not met. Let me introduce myself. My name is Charles Willis, committed to advocate for our young folks and citizens of Richmond, and also the Executive Director of United Communities Against Crime. On yesterday afternoon, we memorialized a young individual, 17 months years. Very sad moment at New Life Delivers Town in Alcoa. And as I go throughout the year and have been already, dealing with the tragedy of our young folks being taken away from us too soon, I wanted to share with the School Board that I'm somewhat extremely happy at your principals and administration as they have so diligently come forward, especially our Board members and their advocacy to make sure that the families of these bereaved young folks that are taken away from us, that some kinds of assistance is given. I encourage you to continue on, and if there's someone that maybe afterwards would like to share with me, I was reading during the budget adoptions, Mr. Camerons, that I noticed a trauma-informed care item that is there, and I don't know if that has to deal with something that would help families in time of need. I understand that, well, I don't understand, I know for a fact. I just left the mother of one of Richmond Public Schools, a parent that lost her life during a car accident on the Boulevard 95. That home-going service will take place tomorrow at our church at 12 o'clock noon. That young lady was the mother of five children, three biological and two others. And the question this afternoon with the grandmother is the support that is needed. I understand the principal from Woodville, I believe, has been to the home, as well as the teacher, but there's some aftercare that's needed. And I would just like to speak with someone, I believe it or not, as much as I know about Richmond Public Schools, I do not know who that person would be, other than Ms. Angela Jones that I had been in contact with when tragedies like this happened. So, I closed in saying, I'm here on a good note. I'm going to stay on the good foot, but I need you all assistance, and I'm open to any assistance that can be given to help assist with families in times like this. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
Good evening, School Board members. Mr. Camerons, my name is Naomi Graves, and I am a parent of a young man that attends Richmond Career Education and Employment Academy, who's with me right there. Five years ago, when he started high school, I went to several of the high schools to see what programs they offered to him, and most of them didn't offer anything, but I was given the opportunity to apply my child to Richmond Career Education and Employment Academy. Now, my son has autism, and he's not really sociable, but once he attended this school, they did a whole lot for him socially and academically, and I'm proud to say that last year, he graduated, something they told me that he would never do. I'm asking you, the School Board, to please leave that school open, because not only did it do for my son, but a whole lot of other children are getting opportunities that I feel personally could not get in any other high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, next item?
I'd like to welcome back that you've been joined by Mrs. Burke. The next item is item three, Award Business 3.01, Discuss Senior Auditor Position.
Thank you. So, my hope this evening is to have a Board discussion about the senior auditor position, which, frankly, I'm frustrated that we are now nearly a year from when we approved the position and have not yet filled the position, and it's an incredibly important position as it's something that, you know, we adopted and was also reiterated as important by the Council of Great City Schools. So, I had a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share from a process standpoint moving forward. One is that I want to ensure that the position is reposted, and that when it's reposted, that the error, the title is corrected to reflect the senior auditor position as we had approved in our budget last year. I also wanted to have the Board formally approve the pay grade for the position, and I would request that moving forward, including in our budget, that we will adopt, that we note the actual pay rate for each position as part of our approval process, just so there is clarity in that as well. And I would like to also talk about how we identify those folks that we are going to bring for the formal interview process, if there is going to be some involvement from the Finance Committee in that process. You know, I think that that might make sense, but open to other suggestions. I want to make sure that the Board is involved with the narrowing or identification of folks to interview. And finally, then, you know, once those folks have been identified, I do think it's important that the Board interviews them first, and I don't, you know, I want to make it very clear that this is a Board position, and so the kind of reporting and interviewing and vetting is really owned by the body. I think those are the primary things, and then ultimately, to have this position filled as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick update. We talked about a couple of those things last week during our first round of interviews, and I believe Miss Page has sent an email regarding your first two points, which is regarding posting the position widely and also adjusting the title. On option points three and four, I'm open to whatever the Board wants to do. The original process that we had outlined and that was discussed within the Finance Committee as a Board was that the HR would vet, call it down to three or four candidates, and that we would, as a Board, would interview those three or four candidates, which is what we did this time. But that any School Board member had the opportunity to look at other resumes, which Mr. Young did, and I think Mr. Young can speak for all of us that, or speak on his experience with that, but, so I won't speak for him, but I think that worked out as a fine process. If anyone wants, based on the interviews that were done last week, it was decided that we wanted to adjust the title of the position, so that will be happening. And moving forward, I'm happy to entertain any additional tweaks to the process if it is the will of the Board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I concur with my colleague, Cia, to my right, and her sentiment that obviously we need to expedite the process, which we've done to convey my gratitude to everybody who's been party to that. And I did have an opportunity to review all the resumes, and I look forward to, I look forward to re-advertising for the position, and would encourage all of our friends and advocates to invite persons to consider applying. As relates to the process, I would second what Kenya said. I do think that it should originate here with the Board. I think that just, I think that makes sense for all kinds of, all kinds of reasons, so I would endorse her approach.
Any other thoughts? So, the, I don't know if we need an official motion or just consensus to move forward. I think the proposal on the table is to remove the administration from any calling of the resumes and instead have that be done by the Board. Is that something that the rest, is that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do need to share those, obviously, I'm walking a fine line, because really so much I can disclose, because it's a personnel issue and we're discussing interviews, but I did convey to my colleagues that it was very complimentary of our, of our staff and of the administration in identifying the candidate who rose to the, rose to the top. That was my assessment of the persons that were vetted for our consideration. But I, nonetheless, I do agree with, with Ms. Gibson.
Mr. Camerons, then, Ms. Burke.
I just want to clarify, the administration is completely agnostic about how this process should be run. We just want clarity. So, if the Board would like to manage it, that is completely fine. Just please let us know exactly what you would like from the administration, and we'll more than happy to carry that out.
Ms. Burke? Thank you, Madam Chair. As Mr. Young just stated, I also agree in regards to the HR department having gone through all the applications beforehand, and really saved us the process and the time and whatever else to get that part of it done. This is a position that we want to fill, as you stated, as Mrs. Gibson stated, as soon as possible. I have complete faith in the staff that did handle that, and I also agree with Mr. Young in regards to, after seeing all of the applications, that he was in agreement, and I trust what he stated. So, my position is to, as it is, I know they have so much already to do, HR, but time-wise, that would really be, I don't know how the process would work otherwise for all of us to have. So, I do trust their expertise, since they are trained in that area, and that is their area of expertise, but that the Board will decide through the interview process who the founder person would be. So, I trust what Mr. Young stated regarding HR.
Ms. Gibson?
I just wanted to, in some of the emails leading up to the interview last week, I just want to get clarity from a process standpoint in terms of what had happened. So, it's my understanding that typically, when a hire is made, I just want to get clarity in terms of the typical process, is that, does the hiring manager typically, we can't, you know, call the candidates, or is that typically done by HR? And then the other question that I have is, you know, we're talking about HR, but perhaps I misunderstood, that there, that the administration had actually interviewed the candidates before that were not in HR prior to the interview by the Board, and I have... And I have some, some concern there. I mean, this is a position that I think the, you know, it's kind of like the U-Mash of, of the school system and so, you know, to, if he were interviewed by the, you know, the, the city prior to his hiring, you know, there might be some, so, yeah.
Yeah, I could speak to what the process was or Liz, did you want to? Oh, I, I just wanted to say, I, I think the only intention was just to call down multiple resumes and, you know, distill it down to a couple that made sense and then give us the opportunity, if we wanted to add anyone to that pool, we could, which is a, I think, was a, worked fine this last week, but I'll let Ms. Fadas go talk to the exact process.
Sure. To answer your first question, hiring managers are in charge of their own selection processes right now. So in theory, the school board would, as you initially stated, be in charge of this hiring process. We were asked however, to help with the hiring process. And so initially what Darren had done is call the resumes for who just met basic requirements. Then we were asked to conduct a first round interview and that was me and two members of the Budget and Finance Team. And then initially, we thought we were going to pass along the strongest candidates to the school board for review, but then were asked to pass along all four candidates for review. So our notes were never shared with the board or influenced obviously any decisions as those were not seen by the board. And we're happy to not do that moving forward if, if preferred.
Ms. Owen?
Well, I don't need to think about auditor position and what they do, so I'm really taking a backseat here, but I would just point out that it is possible to have somebody go through, maybe, maybe our Budget and Finance Committee go through all of them, but I don't think we all need to go through all of them and select the top good-looking ones and then present those to the full board with an attachment sent to us in advance that has all of them if we want to go through all of them, which is what we did when we hired our superintendent. And rather than say, well, here you are, board members, here's 250 resumes and applications, somebody needs to go, go through them before all of us get them. I'm just saying. I don't know who, but I would rather not see an overwhelming number of applications and resumes. So maybe our fancy finance people can figure that, how to winnow it down and make suggestions of the best looking fit for what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. If it's the will of the board, potentially what we could do to tweak the process is have HR just check for preliminary requirements, i.e. whatever, just check the box, like college degree, stuff like that. And then we could have the Finance Committee, if the board wanted to change the process, call down the, the resumes into, per Ms. Owen's suggestion, call them down into the top three to five candidates for the board's interviewing. If that is something that the board wants, I'm happy to report that added to the agenda to discuss the process that our next Finance Committee meeting and come back to you guys with the exact process.
I might just add one consideration and that is that since April, excuse me, since November when the job was posted, only 12 applicants had applied for the position. So part of it is a recruitment issue, so calling it down, we had already done what you just suggested, which is why you had the four candidates you have. So I actually think some active recruitment may need to occur as well.
Yes, and speaking of recruitment, I too sit on the interview panel. And so I do think that we need to expand our recruitment efforts. And I don't know if it was just placed on a couple of, I, I'm not sure exactly the efforts that were taken, but if we can give even, if we can, um, perhaps advertise in, on sites or publications or what have you that are very, um, associations, that's right, associations that are specific.
So for clarity, the singular role you would like the administration to play is recruitment?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, speaking to recruitment, we need to do a better job in terms of recruit, our recruitment efforts. That's what I'm saying, our advertising efforts, that's what, okay? So I'm not saying that's the singular role because we had just talked about something else. I'm just saying to make sure that our, our breadth reaches specific associations that are relevant to the position.
Ms. Burke and Ms. Gibson, and just a quick note, what I'm hearing right now is, one, repost the position, tweak the job title. Two, we, uh, we formally, we, sorry, two is the Finance Committee takes those resumes and comes up with three to five, but shares all resumes with the school board for interview. And that the administration helps us post the position on job boards that they subscribe to.
I think you've answered my question in regards to the HR department would be responsible for the recruiting, is that correct?
Yes.
As you were saying?
My, I just talked to Mr. Kambers and he said that they will assist in making sure that this is posted on government sites and also on maybe finance accounting, et cetera, on job boards. Maybe those of us on the board can also help push it out to our network so that we get a great, we can get a great position.
Another question I had, I too served on that panel with the four persons. Is it permissible or would the board consider having someone from the HR department to be a part of the, not to vote, but a part of the process in terms of the form, the, what was required for us to fill out? I knew because of having done it in the past, but we were pretty much on our own. So either, and the clerks, of course, our clerk shared that information, but technically, or either we'll have a training beforehand because there's certain things that we should have been apprised of before, not in terms of what questions to ask, but in terms of what the procedure is and submitting the paperwork afterwards. Well, now, we know, those of us who are on it, but something to consider. I don't know whether that would...
Yes, I'll say the administration is glad to provide whatever assistance the board would like. We just are seeking clarity so that we meet the board's expectations, that's all.
So now I've got tweak the position, HR department helps with recruitment, the Finance Committee calls down the resumes but sends all of them and that we ask for an HR professional to be in the room with us during the interview. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. This all sounds fantastic and the only other note I would, I just want to reiterate is the pay grade for the position.
So when we, my thought is when we vote, we'll have to vote to approve the position again, so when we do that, we can...
Perfect, thank you.
And I would like to clarify that because it's a modified position, it needs to go back to the Virginia Department of Education, so that will be a bit of time.
Which the administration will handle.
Next item?
The next item is Board Administration Business 4.01, receive an update on rezoning and facilities planning.
I believe the next item was the, I believe the next item was the RCEEA charter.
That was after this, that was 4.02.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Would it be, would it be possible to move that up just so we have someone that needs to get home?
The local board.
Is that okay? Okay.
So we will move the action for the renewal of the RCEEA charter to item 4.01.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair Dorr, school board members and Superintendent Kambers. I'd like to bring forth the Charter Renewal Recommendation for the Richmond Career Education and Employment Academy, also known as RCEEA. RCEEA currently serves 38 ninth through 12th grade students who have low incident disabilities, which requires these students to have specialized support to address their needs. RCEEA offers a specialized curriculum composed of several life domains. Part of their curriculum includes RCEEA students spending significant time in the community and interning at various businesses. These students also have a job coach who provides important feedback. The ultimate goal of RCEEA is for students to be active participants in the community, develop meaningful relationships, that they are able to advocate for themselves and maintain employment. Based on RCEEA's meeting the majority of their charter goals and families being supportive of the program, we heard from three parents tonight, we are recommending that the school board renew this charter for another three years. Joining me tonight to answer any questions is Chrissy, who is with the RCEEA Management Committee.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Owen.
I move that we accept the administration's proposal to renew this for three years.
Second. Any discussion? All right, call the vote. Oh, sorry, it was motion, so, and then second in five is Burke to renew the RCEEA charter for the next three years. EE, make your... Ms. Owen?
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
And Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Motion, passage unanimously.
Next item?
The next item is 4.02, receive an update on rezoning and facilities planning.
All right, good evening, school board. I'd like to provide an update as to where we currently stand in terms of our rezoning work. Since we last met, we have launched our rezoning website. It's live right now. We look to this to be the online hub of our rezoning efforts. Currently up there is a parent community feedback form. There's an interactive map of all of our current zones. We plan to continue to update this website as the work progresses. We've also launched the rezoning advisory committee. Thank you all so much for your nominations. We've reached out to these folks and we scheduled the first meeting to occur on the 30th of this month at RTC between 6:00 and 8:00. We have the list of members here on this, on the second page here. Which I lost. And we've also scheduled our first two community meetings on May 29th at MLK at 5:00 PM and one at 6:30 at the South Side Community Service Center. Our representative, or I'm sorry, our vendor, Cropper, will also be in attendance in Richmond for both of those events on those days. And with that, happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, so the website is live, is it?
It is.
The webpage, try it?
Yes.
Okay, so where do I find it? I'm on the homepage, you know?
You can do a search, there's the, there URL listed there. It's also searchable.
But, so, do we have a link from the homepage?
We can link it on the homepage.
Ms. Gibson?
I just was curious, I wanted to make sure I'm clear on the difference between the, the committee meetings versus the community input meetings. I don't, since our commu, since the committee meetings are public, I'm just wondering, you know, why there are the two, two venues and how, how that's being organized.
Right, so the RAC, this group primarily looks at the different scenarios that are being proposed. And these first two community meetings are just informational for each, for the community. We want to be very upfront about this is the process, these are your committee members on the RAC, this is what you can expect to see in the months coming. The first two meetings for the community are just purely informational, whereas in the RACs, we're going to dig into actually looking at the scenarios being proposed. And if there is a sample agenda provided with your materials for that first RAC meeting.
Ms. Gibson?
I think that, you know, I, I would like to see as many people from the community attend the committee meetings personally and, and I, and it seems that the first community meeting would, where the committee meeting would also have to provide some sort of review as well for the committee members. So, you know, I, I, I just don't want there to be confusion and redundancy and my two senses that, that these committee meetings are really, you know, inclusive of the community as much as possible and I'd love for people to see this committee at work.
Any other questions, thoughts?
I just wanted to, Ms. Cosby, the rezoning webpage can be identified under the School Board tab on the homepage. It's the last option there. But we will make sure that it's on the homepage. Yep. Yep.
Any other questions? Next item?
The next item is 4.03, receive a recommendation regarding the Camelot contract.
Good evening again. I'd like to bring forth the recommendations to renew the Camelot education contract. As you know, Camelot Education provides alternative education programming through the Spartan Academy, which is a part of the Richmond Alternative School. Currently, RAS serves 173 students in grades sixth through 12th who have experienced significant behavioral challenges at their home school. Students are considered for transition back to their home school twice a year. This decision is made based on a review of the student's academic performance, attendance, and behavior while enrolled in the Spartan Academy. In terms of the actual contract, the amount of money we spend is based on the monthly student enrollment. The deck presented tonight has the amount of money we have spent through March of this year at $1,126,000. But right now, I can tell you that the cost of the contract through April is $1,267,000. When you look at the cost, when you look at the cost per pupils, per pupil spending in average teacher salary at the Spartan Academy versus other RPS schools, you can see that the numbers are comparable. Additionally, Spartan staff comply with all of the job expectations outlined by RPS. Provided with this deck is program data for the Spartan Academy for last school year and this school year. There is some exciting data worthy of recognition. For example, there has been a significant reduction in suspensions and school-related arrests. Further SOL data is also promising as there were improvements in student proficiency in more than half of the SOL standards. We originally signed the Camelot contract in July of 2016 and the contract has four option years. Our recommendation, based on the improvement in the number of student outcomes and a positive working relationship between Camelot and RPS, is that we are recommending that we exercise option three. However, we will continue to, as part of our strategic plan, action 1.7, to begin work in the way we broadly think about our approach to alternative education. I will pause here for questions.
Ms. Owen?
I move that we approve the administration's recommendation to exercise option three in regards to Camelot. And I would like to say that in my time of visiting that building, the, it is, the culture the, it is, the culture and climate there, the support given to the students has markedly improved, so I'm very much in favor of this.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke. Any discussion? I will just say, we do not, as the administration, we do not have to have a vote on this tonight, so we can push it to the next meeting if it is the will of the board. I know some people ask me about that in advance of the board meeting. Ms. Gibson? Mr. Barlow?
There's a motion on the floor to vote on.
I'm just asking for discussion. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Ms. Or. So, my impression was that we would not be moving to vote on this this evening. I want to make sure that members of the public who may have input to give regarding the contract or their experience at the school, whether that be students or parents have an opportunity or other community members have an opportunity to at least say their part before we move forward. Although, I'm encouraged to see some of the data coming out of here, I do think that some opportunity for public discussion would be helpful.
Ms. Cosby?
In light of what my colleague has said, so when do, what is the deadline to vote? The next meeting?
Next meeting. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. I mean, I agree that this is something that we would be remiss not to provide the time and allow that input. For me personally, the contract is, you know, one that really gives me significant pause. You know, in twenty seventeen, Camelot, the company, you know, there were very credible allegations of abuse, student abuse, and as a result of those allegations, school systems, several school systems withdrew their contracts, and Teach for America actually withdrew their teacher placements in the schools. And then most, more recently, Camelot in Chicago was forced to pay damages for misconduct because of bid rigging scandals, and so, these are, these are significant concerns, and I think reflective of an education-for-profit model. And so, while I can see that on paper, you know, their, the numbers are good, but to, to be frank, these are numbers that have been provided by the organization and, you know, and we're not also looking at benchmark data from before, and, you know, there might be improvements in that respect too. I don't question that, that I've not experienced, you know, when I'm in the building, you know, but I, the allegations are concerning, and I think that, you know, contracts of this nature give me pause, so this isn't something that I can, I can support.
Ms. Owen?
I'll be glad to postpone my motion until the next meeting.
Any other questions, thoughts? Thank you. Next item.
The next item is four point zero four, receive for a first read the proposed student code of responsible ethics.
I am asking the lovely Ms. Dalton to join us this evening. She is our fantastic caring officer. So now I'd like to bring forth the revised draft of the student code of responsible ethics known as the score for first read. In making edits to the score, our committee had two major goals. The first goal was to decriminalize language and policy. These efforts are aligned to the Virginia Department of Education's guidance on codes for student conduct. For example, we made language changes. The phrase "consequences for students" has been replaced with leveled responses to student behavior. Additionally, we eliminated the phrase "offenses and violations" and instead listed behaviors under one of five different categories, ranging from behaviors that impede academic progress to behaviors that endanger self or others. This also gave the committee the opportunity to ensure that behaviors are matched to the appropriate level of intervention or response. For example, we removed expulsion as one of the responses to elementary level, we removed expulsion as one of the responses to when elementary students steal from school. Our second goal was to increase inclusivity for our students. I do apologize. Our second goal was to increase inclusivity for our students who identify as L B G T Q plus, to make sure those students felt both included and protected. You can see examples of this language changes all throughout the document. I will actually pause right here for questions.
Questions? This is a first read. We'll be voting on it at the first meeting in June. If anyone has additional thoughts outside of tonight, when would be the most helpful to receive those thoughts? Did they email them to the clerk by?
The first meeting in June.
Yes.
So I would say it would require to vote, so you can take it back for committee consideration.
Okay. So, in order to give you all a week to implement the changes, if board members have thoughts that they don't want to share right here, that would be this Friday, May twenty-fourth. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. One is, so, I wanted to confirm that the document that we are comparing against, there were some discrepancies that I saw with that, the document that's redlined, that's been uploaded to Board Docs and the final approved version of score. Could you review that again to confirm that we are, that those revisions have been made to the, to the final approved document?
Yes, Vice Chair, Door, so already services that as an issue, and I just want to connect, have the opportunity to connect with you, so we just go through it together.
And another question is, so I saw that, like, some of the P B I S language has been eliminated, and I just wanted to get background and clarity on that.
That's a fantastic question. It was decided to eliminate the P B I S language simply because right now it is misleading. We do not have P B I S as a, as a division-wide, as a division-wide initiative. It's something that we aspire to, but right now, if you went to our schools, you wouldn't see programs that resemble P B I S in every single one of our schools, and I just, we just did not want the language of the score to be misleading.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As it relates to goal number two and example number one, you referenced "accept as allowed" under Title IX, and the conversation regarding scores, I don't think this pertains, but I just want to ask the questions still. This accounts for, for example, as a boy, I wanted to play on the girls' soccer team. That's what you're referencing in the "accept as allowed" under Title IX? That's not really germane to, what I'm trying to identify is, what's, what is germane to this example and what's not? I mean, I obviously understand we're talking about discipline and code of conduct, but what's the application of that example? Does that make sense?
So, this question, you reference to the status with adding that to the score. Yeah, basically, that wouldn't be with student activities, per se, when you were making the reference to Title IX and, like, with soccer, for instance, but more so in the lines with the dress code policy in itself. So that's where that comes into play.
Thank you. I think I'll probably just follow offline. Questions? Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll start. Anyone want to say? Ms. Gibson?
I also just wanted to state that I would, you know, thoroughly endorse the recommendations made by the gentleman who spoke on behalf of Side by Side, and I'd like to explore more with the dress code as well. This is, is coming as a, as a parent of a tall daughter who has a hard time finding shorts that comply.
I echo what Mr. Ted came and spoke about. First of all, I want to thank you, Administrator, I want to thank Ms. Owen for her tireless work and for sacrificing many hours, both on this committee and as our disciplinary chair, you are godsend to us, but I would also like to say thank you to the administration. Side by Side put forward a fairly comprehensive policy, list of policy recommendations, of which almost all were implemented, so thank you. And I would echo that I would love for us to explore a chosen name and pronoun policy as well as a dress code policy. Any other questions?
All right, thank you all so much.
Your next item is item four point oh five, receive a transcript, high school audit
Good evening, Vice Chair, Door, Superintendent Cameris, board members. I'm here tonight to provide you an update with regards to our work around the transcript audit as well as the current status of graduation projections. So, our transcript work is still ongoing. I want to acknowledge that you might have had the date, April one, in your head as our timeline by when we thought we would be done with everything, and unfortunately, our work continues. As we've gone through this process, the work has moved into an iterative fashion, and the further we dig in, unfortunately, more and more issues have been discovered, and as we work to get to the root cause of these issues, it's taking more time than we had originally projected and planned for with the V D O E. The sort of metaphor that I'm using is, our transcripts on paper are like the iceberg above the water, and they point to the issues, but to really solve and address them, we have to go under deep, deep, we have to get under the surface and really figure out what's causing those. When I updated you in February that our seniors were complete, that was accurate, and at that time, we had checked all senior transcripts and validated them for appropriate courses, G P A, class rank, et cetera. What we are currently working on with our seniors that are remaining, and there's just a small handful, are, there are some seniors who are enrolled in duplicate courses, meaning currently, they are taking a course for which they have already earned credit on their transcript. And according to our business rule for the transcript audit, we will not remove, we will remove, when there are duplicate courses, we will remove the course with the lower grade. And so therefore, we have to wait until grades are final to close out that small bunch of seniors. So as of today, just to validate, what our seniors have, have been reviewed and checked. In fact, they've been reviewed over a minimum of eight times, and again, and that's the process that's been set with our V D O E partners. All of our ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade transcripts have been reviewed at least twice, and in many cases, more, and they are now in the third round of process for those that are still displaying errors. And at this point, we've been able to work through most issues, but the errors are almost entirely related to courses that have been taken multiple times, so the same courses, multiple credit, courses in middle school that were assigned in appropriate credit, and unapproved local courses that should not have resulted. We believe we had caught all of those, but as we continue to do further review, we realize that those corrections were not being made at the school level, and so we've, over the last month, have taken over that process centrally to ensure that all of those errors once identified are fixed and sealed. To add complexity to the process, the, our partners with the D O E, as we uncover unique situations, every unique situation requires a business rule that we then use to make those corrections, and we document that. And so, as of last week, we have a, an additional set of business rules, and so every time there's an additional set of business rules that are identified, we have to go back and make sure that we've applied that business rule to any transcripts that may be affected. In short, we are being very thorough. If it weren't so important, I would say it's tedious, but we are going through, and our team continues to dedicate the resources to get this right, as do our partners with the D O E. In terms of our next steps, we, we currently have our, we believe that we can get this all finished, accounting for final grades, and again, we cannot remove certain courses until grades are in, when students are enrolled in a duplicate course. So, thinking about the grading window, we believe we can wrap these all up by June So with that, that's our transcript work. I do want to flag, and I share with you before, it's not, it's not all terrible news. We have made a big step forward with our new transcript format, and you can't see it on the screen, but you can see it certainly in your version, if you have it in front of you. The format on the left, you can see, for example, verified credits were not populating. And verified credits are, credits that are earned typically by passing an S O L course, an S O L exam associated with a certain course, and each graduate, each diploma type has a certain number of verified credits. Standard diploma currently for current seniors is five, and for advanced is nine. Well, our transcripts weren't, weren't populating, and so families have not had for, I don't know how long, a sense of which of these courses were verified credits or not. On the new format, you can see now that they are populating, and as well as if you look over to the right, there's a summary of verified credit scores over here, and then also credentials, and these are things that are required for graduation. So the new transcript does give a sense of progress towards graduation, but again, in getting these information, in getting these things to populate, it has then revealed issues that we believe may affect, issues that, we believe that there are factor, deeper issues that affect more than the transcript. So for, for example, as I, as I said, not just the surface, but getting beneath, what we, what we've discovered through this process, in addition to some of the courses that we talked about early on, early on, this was about local courses that have not received approval, or local, or courses that should not have had credit. In addition, we are seeing ineffective scheduling and course selection. So you might, students who are scheduled into classes that they've already taken, sometimes in the same year. I can't explain this, that's what we're seeing. We are seeing students who are not scheduled for a sequential elective, which is required. So when the sequential elective might be art one, art two, dance one, dance two, beginning band, advanced band, or a whole plethora of C T E options. Sometimes, it appears that there's not an analysis of what a student needs and then make sure that they are scheduled for all of those factors. And in addition, we have seniors that have not met all of their requirements for graduation, yet they are also not scheduled for a full course load. So we've got some real scheduling issues, and we're trying to figure out how much of this is a systems issue, how much of it is a clarity issue, and how much of it is a training and skill issue, or performance issue. The second big area is, we have not had a systemic tracking of progress to graduation. Our counselors work very hard. They have a lot of information on pieces of paper and on locally-owned spreadsheets, but information is not designed to feed from our student information system into a tracker or a status, and so it's also, it's very difficult for counselors or families or students to fully understand, outside of manual effort, what their progress. understand, outside of manual effort, what their progress is. And because they, those items weren't being populated in the transcript, those questions weren't being surfaced historically. We have students who are missing verified credits, significant numbers of verified credits, seniors who are missing a CTE credential. Again, this was not previously reported or tracked on the transcript. It was all sort of monitored internally, but there wasn't a single place a counselor could go to and say, I know this student has validated that. And then lastly, students are missing necessary courses, and they're not enrolled. For example, a senior might be missing an English 12. English 12 is a required course, or a comparable alternative like AP language. And then third, we, as I've said before, we've had an absence of codified business rules and workflows that really prevent our technology from doing its job. As we know before, we did not have a system or workflow or a set of owners for validating course codes, titles, and weights, how we check validations of GPA and class rank algorithms. These are all things we've had to create and document this year. When we looked back to see where these things were, they were half, frankly, half-stated emails back and forth between our staff and developers with our student information system. So it is shocking, though not surprising, that we are having the issues we are with the absence of really clear plans for how we communicate business rules to our software partners or to our IT team. You know, our VDOE partners recently said that none of us could have predicted the incredibly large hole that was under this rock of transcripts. And as much as I wanted to be able to close the loop and be able to 100% validate and affirm where we are with our transcripts by April 1, I just, we cannot in good faith do that. And so we are going to take the time to continue to get it right and continue to fix it. Those families who have emailed us at transcripts@rvaschools.net have helped us uncover both system-wide issues, like a simple box within the, within the course file in our system is not checked, and that's why it's not counting a course properly. Or something that's really idiosyncratic and specific to one student. But each time a family member contacts us with these individual issues, which we greatly appreciate, we are able to then identify a root cause that we may not have caught otherwise. So we can see it on paper, but we can't figure it out. And so that helps us. So we want to continue to encourage families that have questions or concerns, the best way we know how to make sure families have confidence in this is to email us individually, and we can individually, and I can personally sign off that their transcript is in fact correct and validated. And if it doesn't match their records, we can do the research to get that right. And those families who have reached out to us, I believe, can validate that experience. So these issues may have an impact on graduation rates this year. So as we've discovered this, our, many of our students lack the verified credits they need to graduate. And we discovered this in February, in late February, and began working on this with schools with a comprehensive plan around students who we identified were at risk to graduate based on graduation requirements. By far, the most common reason for a student being at risk to graduate on time, and by that I mean a senior who we are, who we are not yet sure has met every criteria and is right up against the wire. So we're just a few weeks out from graduation. SOL testing is happening in real time, and there are students who, for whom those scores will make or break. There are students for whom their graduation, their course grades are make or break. So when I say at risk, it doesn't mean they won't graduate, and it's likely they will, but it's very close to the mark, it's very close to the line. And so for example, 330 of our students are at risk to graduate because they have not yet earned the verified credits. That means they are currently testing or pursuing locally awarded verified credits to ensure they have met that standard. We have students who, in many situations, have passed the course but have not passed the exam, and so they do not have that credit. In such a case, we are able to award what's called a locally awarded verified credit. I talked to you all about that last summer. But certain qualifications have to be met, and students have to demonstrate mastery of content. The second most frequent reason is our students who lack a CTE credential. This is for a standard diploma only, and a large percentage of our students are on standard diploma, which I've talked to you all about. And this is the, this is the second most common reason, about 130 students. Again, students and our CTE staff are working with counselors and working with students to do those assessments in real time, and as they do those, these records are being updated constantly. And then lastly, students who are missing appropriate coursework. As I said, you need three math courses for a standard diploma. You need four for an advanced diploma. You might not have three. And this is about seven of these students. And some of these students are not, have not been, were not scheduled when we identified this back in February. So counselors have been working with students and families to develop interim plans to get them enrolled in a virtual course that can be self-paced, where students can tackle that. When we identified this with our counselors and principals in the early spring, one of the things we asked them to do is to develop individual action plans for every student at risk of not graduating. And we asked them to communicate with students and families one of three realities. One is, well, four, I guess, one is, hey, you're good to go, keep working hard, finish strong. But of those students who are not in that situation, it is, you could graduate in June, but it's going to be very close, and these are the things that you got, these are the things that have to be true. And with focused support, we think we can get you there. The second group is, you're missing some things, it's unlikely, given the universe of what you need, but we think with some focused effort for the remainder of the school year, plus summer school, you can graduate in summer. And then there's a third bucket, which, looking at the universe of everything, you just, there's just not really a reality, and let's not, let's not pretend, and let's prepare ourselves for that reality, and make a plan to get you back here in 1920 to graduate and earn your diploma, and to really invest you in that conversation. So those were the conversations that schools were to have, and they were having individual plans. So many of our students who needed courses or needed SOL remediation have had plans in place over the last several months. Our students who need more time, who we know are going to be on the summer school timeline, have been, we've been flagging that, enrolling them, and registering them so that parents are aware. So that's built into our summer school planning. And then again, for those students who need to come back in 1920, we are working to make sure that as many of them can complete their remaining coursework in one semester. So let me just explain to you some hard numbers. Our current graduation projections, so if you look at the bottom, the very first column says on track. That means we are 100% certain and feel confident that these students are ready and good to go, assuming they don't, you know, miss the next 18 days of school. Those are 303 students of about 1,200 seniors. The likely column, which is about 507 students, it's, we believe these students will graduate. The counselors have made their best assessment. So my caveat here is, the word is likely, not certain. And we've done our best to make predictions based on the information that our counselors have, and our counselors have the most current information based on what they know about their students. This data is changing constantly with every assessment day. It will change as grades start to come in. So it is likely that these students will graduate, but I do want to flag that, you know, approximately 40% of our seniors are in a situation where we're this close, and that's a systemic problem that we've got to fix. Then about 162 students are likely for summer, so those will, those will be included in our graduation rate. And then about 118 students, we think, will be 1920. And our goal for those students is to recruit them and convince them to come back and to not drop out, and to finish their coursework and graduation requirements. You can see that broken down by school. I also want to flag, as part of this, and in working to address these issues, you know, there are certain set of practices, we've mentioned here and there, but that we will no longer continue. And while I don't think any of these things were done in bad faith, I think they've had an unintentional effect on our students' readiness for the future. And so though we as an administration want to ensure that we do everything we can to make sure all of our seniors cross the stage, and are not only, not only graduate, but are prepared for what's next in life, there are some practices that we believe have artificially or potentially boosted our graduation rates in the past. For example, the locally awarded verified credits. When I asked some folks why we weren't more concerned earlier on about the number of verified credits students were missing, it was assumed that the locally awarded verified credits were given. Well, they're not given. They're not a better stamp, and they need to have a codified process, which we put in the case. I personally reviewed a lot with Mr. Brown, our principal director, hundreds of these applications last week, and gave that information to school. If you have another round at the end of this testing cycle. And we're looking at a likely early verified credit. You actually have passed the course, taken the SNA, and failed it at least twice, but earned a score within a certain range to make you eligible, failure teacher, or school-based staff member, to advocate and demonstrate how to see the passion and mastery of the course. That's submitted to a school-based team, and the school-based team decides, and then passes that recommendation after it's not at this, and then we review that for better rationale and documentation. And we made under a lie, we preempted use of the workkeys assessment, which is a lie of substitute assessment, but it is a much less rigorous assessment than the end of course SNA. And yes, students can still take the workkeys. We are asking that schools, A, utilized by assessment for students who had taken and attempted the, we had writing SNA at this price. So that would preempted, we have to challenge them with the SNA first, and then they can take the workkeys as a substitute, which the state doesn't allow. And then lastly, we've seen a pattern in schools changing diplomas types towards a junior and senior year. We've seen a spike in the number of qualified studies diplomas, which are diplomas that are reserved for undergrads, nine percent of students open to digitalized education plans. And these are students that didn't find credit for most of their courses, they do not take the standard coursework, or the standard, the standards are done and do not take a big badge in. So when you see a spike because a student with an IEP who's at a standard diploma hasn't met those requirements, that concerns us. And those are conversations that really should be had during the transition planning process at the beginning of a student's high school career, not at the end. So we are looking into, ultimately, families very much have a right to make that request if this student has an IEP, that we need to take a look at the kind of the patterns and trends out there. In better news, we are, promising as I should say, these are good facts, but I do remain optimistic that we will get this right, and that we will continue to support our schools and support our students to meet the value of graduation, and not meet the minimum value but truly be prepared. And so one of the things we've been working on in data testing is a graduation progress report that's tied to our Aspen system, making sure that our data feeds, our actual data feeds one report. This will enable counselors to make, understand who's at risk much earlier and much sooner, and enable parents and students to also understand where they are on the path to graduation as well. So we're still data testing this, but we're hoping to match this at least by early winter next year. And then lastly, there are a number of other measures and safeguards that we're instituting to ensure the integrity of our transcripts, as well as these things I've talked with you about tonight. And these are all layers that really build upon themselves. So we really just have to invest in training and building institutional knowledge, creating standard operating procedures and policy manuals. We need to make sure that our course offerings are aligned and approved, and we are working closely with the state on that. We need to make sure that we give schools proper scheduling and academic advising guidance so that some of the issues I talked about earlier are not present. We need to be able to monitor this information in a more quantifiable way. And then we need to really have a clear process to check, to, for error correction, but also preemptively identify through internal informal spot checks that these issues are not persisting. So for example, this summer, before school starts, all senior, we'll be pulling with the DOE a sample of senior schedules against their graduation status, and making sure that they're scheduled appropriately, as an example. We won't be, we will not do that for every single student, but our counselors will. We'll do a spot check to make sure that those things have been addressed and identified. I'm happy to take questions.
Mr. Barlow, Mr. Yung.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. Dr. F., thank you for taking the time to present this, and of course, for all the hard work that's gone into remedying these issues over the course of the past year, it seems like an unbelievable effort. And it's really also great to see that, that we have plans in place to address some of these issues. But, and I know these are issues that you largely inherited, but it's incredibly frustrating to see students who are impacted by failure of adults to address these issues over the years. And I actually work for a company that does course enrollment software and stuff like that for universities. And so I get exposed to that technology, I see how it works, and that ability to communicate between the student information system and your enrollment system, and set up those rules and everything like that, of course, is very important. So what I'm curious about is, how close are we to being in a position where we can really manage that technology and use it as effectively as possible, and making sure that we have the proper workflows to ensure that this doesn't happen in the future? And are people who are, are counselors going to be notified if a student is enrolling in a class immediately when it doesn't fit with a course selection that will put them on track to graduate on time? I just think that there are solutions out there, there are approaches out there that can really maximize student retention and promotion, and I want to make sure that we're using them as effectively as possible so we don't see these issues moving forward.
Yes, absolutely. It is, we know that there are systems and processes out there that can fix this. To answer your question as simply as I can, we believe we, we've made a lot of progress, and we'll make a lot of progress over the next several months in terms of identifying workflows and some ways to create guardrails or flags within the system. However, thinking about our strategic plan and our need to modernize our systems, this sort of goes beyond, you know, this particular issue. And as we do our scope of work, and I'll let Mr. Simmons speak to this later, more later, but when we think about our ERS solutions, and when we look for a broader system, and how data, our data talks itself, this will be something we'll need to consider, whether or not our SIS is the right SIS, or if there's, if there's a different issue. So I don't have a concrete answer in terms of when I can say this won't be an issue, but I know it's directly tied to some of our broader data system needs. So in the meantime, on working with IT, we're trying to build in these guardrails where we can, and then on the back, and then also training our counselors to make sure they true, and our principals. I mean, our high school principals also need to be part of this, and so making sure that our high school staff really understands some of these fundamentals.
I just have one follow-up, if that's all right. So one other thing comes to mind. So before the last administration left, in the final budget they proposed, there were positions for system operators to make sure that we could ensure the integrity of a lot of that data that was going into it. And part of that, I think, was to relieve the burden on our counselors, to allow our counselors to effectively counsel. So to what degree do you think our counselors and folks who are putting this information in and are responsible for watching out for, for students' ability to graduate within these timeframes are overwhelmed? Or do you think it is a training issue solely? Or do you think it is a training issue solely?
I think it's, I think it's both. And I, we're working to, with our schools, with our, we have these sysops at our schools that, where I know Mr. Simmons and team are working to make sure that that role and those processes are tightened up and working. I, but I do not believe they've been part of sort of the transcript or high school graduation progress monitoring. My understanding is that's really more about enrollment, registration, et cetera. So as we look to revamp that role, making sure that some of these pressure points can be taken off of counselors. And I do think our counselors are certainly overwhelmed by, by the absence of good systems. And good systems could certainly speed up their, could focus their time and attention on counseling rather than data gathering. And at the same time, there will be no data system that, that substitutes for human view and to make sure like that the student in front of them is, reflects what courses they need to take. So I think it has to be both.
Thank you.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I have two observations or compliments and then one question. First commendation regards that I'm so pleased that RPS is not going to continue what has been done forever, which is to turn the blind eye to our obligation to fulfilling what we are expected to do for our students and instead in the past, just allow students to graduate irrespective of if they completed everything or not. So my compliment to, to the team for raising the bar for, for us, for RPS, but also for our students. The second compliment observation regards what Scott just spoke to, so I'm not going to belabor the point. Very, very pleased to hear that. And, and then my, my question regards the data trace that you had on the screen, 303 for example, students. That does or does not map or did you take into account yet or just cross-reference Harry's attendance data?
Good question. So students who are in the at-risk category, when we think about failing grades, those failing, failing grades should, should account for students who might fail due to extensive But it, but to your question, depending on how that works out and whether there, what waivers there are, that, that number could certainly be affected by the absence issue.
Quick follow-up question.
Yeah, just real quick. So just so everyone understands, so the, so the number, like that, those numbers likely will, will change, will probably be lower on the, in the first column?
Oh, on the first column, we don't think so. Again, I will, I do want to point out, these are, this is an imperfect science. Again, I just shared that our, our data systems certainly do not operate the way that they need to, to help us make smarter decisions at the school level. At the same time, we're at, I mean, there's a human element to this and that's the heart of counseling, right? And so when a counselor tells me a student is on track, they're taking into account the whole picture of what they know about what's both on paper and what they know about that student. What their students tend, you know, what, are they, you know, do they have senioritis or are they still all in? And so to, the, these numbers, I just want to affirm are based on counselor and principal predictions, based on what they know. I would hope that they don't change dramatically, but these are certainly not hard and fast rules. And because we're in the time of year where lots of things are moving fast, we hope to see these numbers move, you know, really more from the likely to the certain column. Hopefully that way, not the other way, not from the certain to the uncertain.
Dr. Supini.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this update. Well, I have a few questions and more, try to be mindful of other board members. But to start, you know, going back to what Mr. Barlow mentioned, it's our systems. Systems are great when they work and when they're used, but I'm hoping that it's not merely someone, whether sitting in front of a student and entering it indirectly, as opposed to having some sort of pay with trail, so that you can go back to and be able to verify what you've input in, in the system. So I don't know that's going on that because it seems a bit off. How many seniors do we have at each of the schools?
Gosh, I should have left off ahead. We have 1,290, but God.
But first, I want to mention that, the reason I'm asking that is because there seemed to be some discrepancy between the total numbers that you have here with each, from the, from your presentation, the total number from each school that was sent to us earlier, as well as the total number that provided by the schools, the three different numbers. So I'm looking to see which one's correct and why there's such a discrepancy because it seems, it's not just one or two. There's quite a few.
When you say numbers provided by school, I'm not sure what numbers you're referring to.
Let me give you an example.
Okay.
For example, Armstrong. Going across the board, if I'm looking at it properly, you have eight, 100, 23, and 31, which equals to what?
164, no, 162, if I'm doing my mental math.
Right. So, but the numbers that were given to us in the report was 154.
In terms of seniors?
Right.
Yeah. So what I can say, again, this is based on all the seniors who are in our system. So there may be students who are maybe cohort, the cohort from last year's graduating cohort. Fifth and sixth year seniors still count in, in the roster, so it could be due to that. It could be due to, there could be a student on this list who has maybe transferred out or a student on that list who have transferred in. So what, what's the number you have for what, on the report, what's the delta between 162 for Armstrong?
From the school, it's 154. The report from Mr. Dasko is 170 and going across, it was 162.
When you say the report from the school, I'm not sure what, what data source that is.
If you get, if you call the schools and ask them, how many seniors do they have?
Okay. Gotcha.
154. So it's such a...
So why, why this is slightly number than a school number is my guess that it includes fifth and sixth year seniors. But as I said before with Mr. Young, two things. This data is a good projection. I'm, I'm concerned that they're not perfectly aligned, but to be honest, they're in the ballpark. And, and I know that sounds ridiculous, but as we just talked about, we do have data entry issues. And so I'm not going to pretend that that's not true. And part of the transcript work that's been difficult is to try to get a sole source of truth. So much that we went to the state record, what's called the longitudinal data record, and we made our own spreadsheet for which students had verified credits or not, because I didn't trust the data. So I, I will go back and compare these to the report that was provided to you from Central in terms of total numbers to see where there are significance. And I will look at each school and call to find out why they are, why these numbers are off. So I can definitely follow up.
I'm gratefully concerned with these numbers and we have, what, three weeks left essentially? And we're still looking at numbers like this?
As am I.
And thank you for, I guess, I guess thinking about the, the progress as far during summertime to help those students get where they need to be. Are we still using that grant project graduation?
Yes.
Okay. I'm assuming that's...
Yeah, we've received about $50,000 per year and that is used to help fund summer school for these particular students.
Okay.
I'll follow up on the numbers. Thank you for raising the discrepancy.
Thank you. I'll let some others go.
Thank you so much. You've done an awesome job with this, but it breaks my heart that you have to do this because I noticed so much more that you could, in regards to the system, the database, it's been off for years. We've had former superintendents that would send administration, from central administration, to each school to count student by student by student by student, which would take days to do. Then we also have students that are here today and gone tomorrow. And we don't always have ample persons in place to put that correct data in place. I'm very, very, very concerned with the numbers at all the schools, but Armstrong in particular. So what my question is, is there any, you spoke of virtual classes, is there any, that's at school, not at home. So for those students that already have a full load, when do they have an opportunity to catch up? And then my other statement is, the IAP, the individual action plan, excellent. I think every child in the city of Richmond needs to have not an IEP, but an IEP. If you want your school to be fully accredited, every child should have a folder with everything included in it, from what classes, attendance, and it should be all gone. Another statement before you answer my question in regards to professional development, with the principals and counselors, I'm wondering accountability here, because we get what we expect. So my other question is, who's going to be responsible to make sure this doesn't happen again? Because these are our children, these are our, they're our responsibility. And it just, it's disheartening. So my first question was in regards to virtual, to virtual courses, excuse me. I'm ready for a trip. The second item is kudos on the individual action plan. Third item is, who's going to be held responsible to make sure this doesn't happen again? Or have we gotten to that point? And I have one last, okay, professional development. Students need to know what they're being held responsible, their parents need to know. Just as we send home report cards or whatever else. I've seen students, when my sons were in high school, thank goodness it didn't happen to them, but we had parents who had complete binders with all their grades and all their report cards, then get to their senior year and find out they didn't have enough credits to graduate. I felt bad because I didn't have time to put all my children's things within a binder, but I've seen parents buy in to make sure they're following. So just not to have professional development for our teachers and our state, everybody needs to know, because this, 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 this is ridiculous. This, this should not have happened in this day and time, but I thank you for doing what you're doing, but we've, it's unacceptable. So accountability piece, virtual classes, everybody needs to know. Everybody needs to be held accountable.
Yeah.
Children and students oftentimes can do their own if they know what's expected.
Yes. So to answer the simplest question first, in terms of the virtual courses, again, each counselor has worked with students to figure out what's reasonable and that drives the timeline, whether that's a June timeline or a summer timeline. So if a student is particularly invested and committed to the June timeline, I mean, our young people can do just about anything they put their minds to with support. And so they may have to be doing that after school or on the weekends. And I will say, our counselors have worked diligently. It is, to your point, Dr. Supini, we should not be in this situation at this point in the year. It is unacceptable. And, and at the same time, our counselors did answer the charge and have been working very aggressively to tackle this. And I think, you know, I want to, I do want to point out, the combined number of on-track and likely June is, is, that's roughly, you should, our counselors would say, based on everything they know, those 507 students are going to graduate, right? We won't know that until all the data's reviewed. And to your point, Dr. Supini, we will make sure that all that data is validated. In terms of the professional development, we do have a initial plan for, we're having a summer counselor institute in late June, after school was out, where we'll be tackling many of these issues in partnership again with our VDOE and circling back to that. And then we're developing a year-round scope and sequence for professional development for our counselors and principals. In terms of your, and, and I think for our students and families, I do think there's a communication and awareness set of work that needs to happen. And our students, I do think, can be empowered to take ownership of their path towards graduation. I know, I've seen it firsthand. And I think in turn, this leads to your question around accountability. Look, there's a broader problem with the culture of expectations. And I think we've seen that in lots of different examples. And that's a deep, and that's not about an individual person deciding consciously to lower expectations for our children, but we have a system-wide problem of low expectations. That's what leads to problems like this. It leads to, we have a system where, would you see something, say something. Well, we, we've dealt with that this year, like there's an inattention to care. I don't know how a, I don't know how we have a student who's taking the same classes twice and the student doesn't feel empowered to speak up, or that the parent doesn't feel empowered. I, that's a deeper, that, we can't point to an individual and say, you're accountable for that. At this scale, there's a broader cultural problem of either turning the eye, a lack of attention to doing the right thing, or just accepting less. And, and I don't, I can't point that to someone other than we've got to change that, starting with ourselves. And I, and I do think, look, if you, if, if anyone who works at our high schools, I've said before, this is a division-wide problem. And we have not had the staff in place as a division. Historically, we've had one specialist position for all of counseling. We need five just to tackle this high school thing, right? So we are, we have, we are working to change that with our, some of our positions, but our, our schools do need more support and guidance on this. We have not provided that to them. So I would say, first and foremost, we are accountable. And then secondly, you know, we cannot outsource these things to one role at the school. This is not only a, it is, it is primarily a counselor's job, but as a high school, former high school principal myself, I knew the graduation requirements forwards, backwards, and sideways. I've since learned the code of Virginia forwards, backwards, and sideways. And I'm not sure that every single high school instructional staff member knows the Virginia requirements forwards, backwards, and sideways. That's not because people don't care, it's because people are busy. So I don't know how to answer that other than more broadly and...
And then, this colleague, and then, Mr. Barlow. Thank you. I am, I am frankly aghast. And I apologize that I don't have compliments to offer. The fact is, is that in November, we, we received a 400-page report from the Virginia Department of Education, which was very clear in the, the scope and breadth of the issues that are at hand. At the end of the day, we owe an apology to our kids. And, I mean, we are looking at a chart that for Armstrong High School, only eight students out of what, 170 are on track to graduate. And this information is not new. In terms of kids being enrolled in, 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 in the same class twice, these are not new issues. We knew. There are a couple of, three, three points that I want to make. One is regarding our budget. This is our last opportunity to ensure that we capture our true needs and I don't feel confident that we have captured the staffing required in order to address the needs of the schools. And I implore my colleagues to consider this moment when we look at our budget that we are adopting next month. The, the other piece is regarding the course offering guide. The, the other piece is regarding the course offering guide. That is something that I think we should have approved by now, or seen by now, or something by now. We have students that are preparing for next year and do not know which classes they're going to be enrolling in. So I don't have confidence that we are not setting ourselves up for a similar situation next year. The, the third piece is communication. Right, it is May. And, and I have decided, you know, I've picked which graduation ceremonies that I'm going to, I mean, this, it's May. The VDOE made it very clear that this was to be resolved by April 1st. And, and frankly, we have promised that it was going to be resolved last year, many of these issues. I, I want to have a very clear understanding, what has been communicated to families and students thus far? Because if we want to build trust, we need to let folks know what's going on. And so I, I feel like the communication hasn't been there, because this isn't the kind of surprise that I expected to see in May.
I echo almost everything my colleague has stated, you know, I, it is heartbreaking, and it is definitely not equitable. And I agree with my colleague, Ms. Gibson, this is not new. And it's not something that we can lay blame on systems, et cetera. We went through something very similar to this last year. Didn't deal with the verified credits, but it was an attendance issue. So much so that we had to suspend our attendance policy, or else so many seniors would not have graduated. And so for the second year, consecutive year, now we're dealing with a graduation, yet again, we're talking about almost 46% of our seniors at risk for not graduating. So I, I just feel with the type of, of the situation that we had last year, we knew we had a transcript issue. And I do, I'm very encouraged to see that some of the processes will change, but I think we do have to make sure that we have more of a concerted effort, even if we have to do, as Ms. Bird mentioned, count, you know, get everyone together. It's a, it's a people, you've said it yourself, it's a, it's a, it's a people issue, it's a human issue, really. And so we should not be at this umpteenth hour discussing this. And especially, I wish we had known in February, when you all knew that this was going to be an issue, as we've been talking about this, which we had known earlier than February. But I will just say to my colleagues, when we talk about accountability, the accountability is with us. We've been asking for a dashboard, we've been asking for regular updates, we, there's certain things that we've been asking for, and now it's the time, it just has to happen. And these are certain things, we know this is something that we have to track, whether we track it every month, going forward for the next school year, it is something that we have to do. Our seniors, our seniors on track, just give us a monthly report. And there's so many other things that we must do, because the buck stops with us, colleagues. It does. And I apologize to parents, I, I just, I cannot, I can't fathom, I just attended my son's graduation, graduating from college, I can't fathom finding out at the umpteenth hour that he's not going to graduate.
So just to be clear, this is upsetting. And we've been working to address the issue, so we could, but I also want to re-remind folks, we can provide a dashboard, but if the data feeding the dashboard is wrong, the dashboard isn't helpful. And the systems, we just finished a conversation about our systems, and our, we have, you know, what I will say, you know, I certainly have been humbled by how much work and time and effort it takes to truly fix this. And when I said before you all previously, I said, we are going to fix it and fix it correctly. So I, I chose, and we chose, to work on getting our students notified, making sure that our parents were notified two months ago, and then we set about trying to fix it and make sure we have the right data. If I brought you data in, at the end of February and March, it would not have been clear. I would not have been able to tell you that information. But I, I am deeply concerned about this as well. I want to make sure that's not lost on anyone. This is what we've been working on, this is where we're spending our time, but it is, I, I wish there was a way for me to describe to you all how deeply entrenched the tentacles of dysfunction are related to these issues. And I, I don't, I don't like to say that, because it sounds like some sort of excuse, but I, I thought we'd get this done by February. We could have gotten it done at a surface level, and I could have ignored certain things that said, we'll deal with that next year. We didn't have to tackle some of these things that were the right thing to do, like making sure lavCs were correct. So I, I do share in your frustration and anger. I would be remiss to not share with this board. I think we, we all have to really come to terms with the impact of deferred maintenance and the years of deferred maintenance. And I welcome the urgency and the pressure to fix it, I just ask for the right trade-offs. So if this is the priority, what are the other things that are going to be a delay?
Thank you for that. I just want to be clear, even if in February, the information that come to us, hey, we don't have the exact numbers, but this is what we're looking at, would it help to, so that we can, we can better understand, and at that time even say, what is it that you need?
Absolutely.
We were having these conversations about budget. You know, you, you've said yourself, hey, you need a lot more people dealing with your counselors at each school. Those are budget decisions that could have been made earlier, you could have said, we're not cutting, and I'm, I'm sorry, I have to do this, but we're not going to cut 13 million because we know we need so many people to work with our counselors. We might have to just cut 11 million. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I understand.
You're talking about trade-offs, that's what I mean, that's what I'm talking about.
I understand.
In terms of knowing this information that could help us make better decisions, that will help our students, so that we're not looking at almost 46% of our kids being at risk for graduating, that is not equitable, it is not.
No, it's not. I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I ran for office, there were a lot of folks in this town, not many in my district, granted, but other parts of town, that contended that I was off-base when I said that our, our P S was broken. Not that our students are broken, not that our teachers are broken, but that our P S is broken. And I just want to affirm something that you said a moment ago, and I was so pleased when you said it, Tracy, and you, it was that culture, you spoke to culture a moment ago. And I don't think that I'm anywhere off-base when I say this, when I said, for nine months on the campaign trail, but I believe that forever in RPS, there has been a culture that is something akin to the following. There were folks that said, our students, our students, if you empower them to partly manage their own transcripts and what they've taken and what their obligations are, are incapable of that. And I think that that's disgusting, and it's offensive. But I'm rather certain that there was a culture, maybe an unspoken culture, that only affirmed that kind of approach. So I, I agree with everything that has been said pertinent to how tragic this is, and I just, like I've said before, I think it's our obligation to literally turn RPS upside down, blow it up if you will, and start over. Because frankly, the deficiency, that was the polite word that you used, is significant. And, and some folks have known that for a long time. I'm just very grateful that we are changing culture, raising expectations of ourselves, and prioritizing students. And if we acknowledge and recognize that they're capable of so much more than what we folks have thought in the past, then certainly we'll succeed. No, there was not a question in there, but thank you for indulging me.
Dr. Sapini?
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to belabor the point, but there are a couple of other questions, some of them have been answered, but as it relates to the parents and families, as well, when they were notified, things of that nature, before we get into that, was there a thought or even one looking at the numbers from last year, do we have those?
I do not have numbers relevant to compare this process from last year, I have no data that suggests even a process of monitoring.
The number of graduates from last year, do we have that somewhere?
The number and...
The number of graduates from last year.
I'm sure I can dig that up.
Just to compare?
Sure.
Okay. But then with that, if you look at the numbers from last year, which were, you know, were problematic as well, and maybe saying, hey, perhaps in September, we can, with the counselors, reach out to every senior and say, okay, what are you taking, so on and so forth, so that we leave that way they know. What courses, things like that, just so that way we wouldn't end up here.
Yes.
And also with the question of when were parents notified? I'm afraid of the, the potential response, as Ms. Cady mentioned, this is peak, you know, graduation preparation time. But also with this type of news...
So I, I can answer your question.
Unfortunately, I could picture some students being so angry or, you know, just in fact, they just would say, you know what, let me drop out.
Absolutely.
So that, I don't need to tell you.
Absolutely. So in terms of students and families' communication, we had, I met with counselors in mid-March, and I started, I mean, a full-day meeting with high school counselors and principals about this issue, and outlined a process for interring students, providing individualized plan, we provided them the data that we felt was validated based on true single source of information from the state, and gave them a set of next steps. And we started the training and ended the training with the following statement, which is, it is your job to ensure that the student and the family are clearly aligned on their plan for graduation, and that if there is any student who may not walk across that stage in June, those families know now. So schools were given the week after spring break as the deadline, which I believe was April 14th, if I'm remembering off the top of my head. So schools, so that was the, where they were supposed to sit down with any student at risk and say, June is possible, but here's what needs to happen. And family, student, and counselor are all on the same page, there's complete alignment. If it's step summer, we're all in alignment at summer, and if it's 1920, we're all in alignment. So that was what was instructed to high school principals and counselors. In addition, I believe it is standard practice mid-year to provide a, what I'll call a jeopardy letter, but it is not personalized. Some of our schools are very good about doing one-on-one outreach mid, at the semester, and I would say some of our schools don't have that practice in place. In 1920, we will be tightly managing and overseeing every single month, a set of activities around progress monitoring for graduation, including the tool we just provided to you. But we're no longer, we're not just going to provide instructions, and we are going to have to really, for lack of a better term, micromanage the things that need to happen every month at the school level, until we can be assured that our data systems and our practices are working. But I, I share your fear, and I, I have made it very, very clear, that exact scenario should not happen. Now, I cannot tell you line by line, kid by kid, that that happened for every single student. But I can certainly, I will find out if it didn't, because it will come to Harry in my desk. And if you have any constituents for whom that's the case, I encourage you to please direct them directly to my office or to Harry's office, and we will follow up and find out from the school where the breakdown was.
I appreciate that, and while I expect you to inspect what you expect, the same goal for everyone here, that they need to, while we go along, and, you know, a lot of times we'll ask questions to whoever. The goal is to inspect what you expect, so that we don't, you know, end up with a situation like this, whether it happens to deal with graduation, the budget, you name it.
I won't know.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much, and it's unfortunate that we have inherited this, and it's continuing. I'm sure it's going to be something else, unfortunately. Attendance, as Dr. Sapini just stated, the budget piece, the, and now the graduation rate. What my concern is that I don't know what the process was, and that's at your, your level to address that in terms of how parents and students were informed, that they signed off, that they knew, or, and we may have to micromanage, it may have, we may have to get to that point. Because Armstrong is just, I know we have, we may have students that will not return. We don't want to have more dropouts. So as we move forward during the summer, it's, it's, we're going to have to have a plan in place that's so tight and right, that we're not leaving any child behind. And you inherited this, this was something, and that baffles me, how it was able to go on this long. When you have that amount of children, likely, that's an assumption. That's not good, and it's not your fault. So please don't think I'm, and I understand the process, and Mr. Young just stated earlier, there's a lot that needs to be addressed. And I'm glad that we're moving forward to make a lot of wrongs right, because we are not addressing every child's needs. So this, this is a beginning, and it's going to be something else. So the manner which we handle this will also be the foundation for the future. And as I stated, he stated as well, Dr. Sapini, it may have to be micromanaging until we get it right and mean business about the accountability piece. It is what it is, thank you.
Mr. Barlow?
So I appreciate the further explanation here. When you mentioned a deadline in April for, for school administrators and support staff to have these discussions, it seemed daunting to me just to even have to have those types of discussions with that many students on such a short timeline. Whether it be one or two people, if you're going to sit down and have meaningful conversations about a student's future. So I do come back to this, this question about to what degree we need support so that we are capable of having those types of, types of, those types of discussions. And would like to hear more about, about whether we need additional staff to help out with these types of counseling issues and system operations issues and data entry issues to make sure that these issues are cleaned up. Because I think micromanaging has its place, but I've been hearing a lot about, you know, with VDOE things going on, I mean, there are points where I think we're micromanaging you guys, where you guys might be micromanaging other people, where the VDOE might be micromanaging the whole situation, where sometimes it feels like the city's a micromanaging things. And I'm all about having a firm grasp of what's going on, but I want to make sure that we're providing the support so that people can meaningfully do their jobs.
Thank you. So my question is, as we move forward, when can we receive our next board meeting, will we get an update? An update to include a very comprehensive plan? An update to include a very comprehensive plan as we look at, as Ms. Burke mentioned, for the summer students or whatever, where we are? Well, I'm just asking.
When you say comprehensive plan, can you just say a little bit more about what you're looking for?
Look, we, it deals with, as Ms. Burke mentioned, the professional development piece, the accountability piece, just what the supports that we have in place to make sure that our students are moving forward and as many can graduate as possible.
Oh, sure. I can provide you the short-term piece. The longer-term solve, I don't think that would be wise for me to spend time on in the next three weeks. I want to focus on the kids at hand.
Right.
But for the short term, absolutely. Yes. And I certainly can provide an update at the next board meeting. I will also provide an update on the specifics around parent contact. And I do want to flag two things, just to, I guess, make sure this is really understood. Our counselors and principals, if they were here before you tonight, would say, you should assume that the on-track and likely June are graduating in June, based on the diligence that they've done. For every student on this list, I have a line, our staff is with counselors, and we have a line, an individual plan for every kid, and I have an update for every single one of those 100 kids. I'm happy to sit down with you, Ms. Burke, and for your students in your district, and show you all those kids and exactly what they're doing. So I do know that our counselors and schools are working aggressively to tackle this, and some of them had been before, some of them maybe needed a focusing. So we do have that, and I can share more, certainly more specifics and more examples at our next meeting. We'll have more updates from SML testing as well that I can provide, because we're in that window right now. And, and again, I would be, I have disturbed, and I have been disturbed by these numbers. I think you're going to see most of those kiddos in those first two columns graduate. The concerning thing is, it shouldn't be this close, because if it's this close, we're focusing on getting them across the finish line, we're not focusing on preparing for what's next. So I want to make that distinction. And I guess the last thing I would say is, despite all of these realities, I am still wildly optimistic that these things can be fixed and addressed, and I know that our kids can do this, and I know that we can better support our school staff to do this. I think it's about trying to figure out which part of the elephant we start with as we tackle it. But I am wildly optimistic, despite all of these harsh realities, that we will be able to get this done.
Thank you so much. I believe we will as well. Just one thought regarding summer school. We need to make sure that graduation this, this summer is absolutely well-done, well-organized. Everything should be in place just as it, just as it is in June. It really needs to be stellar, because I'm afraid for many of our children that may not want to go to summer school or will end up at 31 with Armstrong to be dropouts. We don't want that. So it really has to be something great with that high school graduation. Maybe we need to do the lunch or the breakfast or something extra special, because it's not their fault.
Noted.
So whatever I can do to help, I'm sure all of us would be happy to do something to make sure that we've exhausted all avenues to make sure. Maybe we need to have a speaker that they would not even think about having, something really different, because somebody's going to be left behind. That's inevitable.
Thank you.
I just have a quick, a quick comment and question. I echo Ms. Burke and some of the other members about a list of what we can do to help, so whether it's resources, whether it's spring, summer, whatever it is, it would be helpful to have that as an update. Two, to Ms. Cosby's point, what is the, what is, just something to keep in the back of our mind, and we can work on making sure that we get this back before the board in terms of a scorecard, but what is the right metric, and how often can we check in on it, and what is your perspective on that, so that we can make sure that we're monitoring this in real time? And then my third is just a question. I, actually, third statement is, I think it's good that we have a culture where we can have these sort of conversations, and I don't want you to stop, so I know this is a tough conversation, but I'm glad that we're having it, and we need to be having more of these conversations focused on student achievement, which sometimes we get off on that, so this is, I think, you know, good for us and for growth. My question, though, is how, how much do you think the likely June category is, happens every year? I mean, I think we're just adding transparency to the fact that there's a likely June problem, but I suspect that this is a challenge that happens year over year. Is that?
I think, while I don't have anything to validate that, I do believe that that is the case. I think that this is standard operating procedure, which is why I think frankly, our school staff were not as alarmed as I was when I initially raised this issue. So, but again, we don't have any historical process for monitoring this centrally. It doesn't mean that it hasn't been happening at the school level, but at least now we can compare year over year, and we can certainly start comparing year over year much sooner. Thank you very much.
Next item?
The next item? The next item is 4.06, receive a recommendation on the middle school schedules, beaming.
Irving, sorry to keep you so late, but you are welcome to go home, and we thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
If possible, I'd like to stay a bit longer.
Sure. Just check in with us whenever you're, or tap Scott and let him know when you're, when you're ready for us to.
Thank you.
Hello again. I am joined with our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Autumn Neighbors, and our Director of Middle Schools, Solomon Jefferson. They've been working with me on this schedule, so they'll be here to help answer questions as well. So at the board's request, and in response to some questions from certain community members, we began having conversations with middle schools around potential, just to collect feedback on the middle school schedules and engage stakeholders around the following topics. What, in terms of course offerings, really wanting to ensure equity in course offerings across our middle schools in terms of the variety of electives, as well as the courses offered for high school credit. Scheduling, looking at equity in schedules in terms of students getting a robust number of minutes each day for reading and math, for example, and the length of the school day, exploring the possibility of would lengthening the school day help us achieve one and two? And were there any other issues that community members were interested in us exploring for middle school schedules? So we met with each of the middle schools over the course of March and April. And just some of the summary, the key themes that we heard in terms of issues to address in our middle school schedule. We do offer a variety of courses for high school credit. Those are Algebra I, Spanish I, Spanish II, Earth Science, Geometry, Art I, in some cases Biology, but they are not equitably offered across middle schools, either by the course being offered or the number of sections, or to put it differently, the number of students to whom it is available. There can be, as you all know, high school credit courses must have a certain number of seat hours, which typically comes up to about, it's 140 hours a year, and so putting those during other elective times, that might be 45 minutes, you might not be able to offer those same electives in a 45-minute schedule because it doesn't meet the seat time. So there's a tension between, we have, we heard constituents request a desire for more variety in electives. We heard them request a desire for more high school credit-bearing courses, and we also heard them request, in some cases, wanting to go deeper. So if you're a band student and you really love band, you want to be able to go all-in on band and still have other options. So we were trying to figure out, how do we ensure we all get our cake and eat it too in terms of courses? We also knew that there was a question about our compliance with health and PE requirements. The code on health and PE requirements is somewhat vague, and so we wanted to look at that. Our English language learners tend to have limited options, and we in our middle schools only offer world language, only one world language, which is Spanish. So when we think about course offerings, these are some of the themes that rose to the surface from our community members. In terms of scheduling, we do not have a consistent schedule for our middle schools, which means there can be inequity in terms of how much time we're spending in core content classes. And I think given, given our reading and math outcomes and our middle schools accreditation status, we believe more time, and constituents reinforce this, teachers were at these sessions, more time for these courses is necessary. We also have folks ask for more time for science as well. Not all middle schools have a built-in enrichment or intervention period, so students who need intervention either have to stay after school, you know, or come during lunch, or get pulled from an elective class, which can then affect other interests in school. So the students who often most need a reason to come to school other than reading and math are pulled out of, say, something they might otherwise love. Due to the size of our middle schools, lunch is a scheduling challenge and happens early, and it also splits instructional periods in some cases, meaning you'll start reading, go to lunch, come back to reading. And time is just not always sufficient during the day to allow for the minimum number of minutes for high school credit-bearing classes. We know that there's a, there are folks who want us to really focus on the middle school schedule and middle school changes, and we see, we want to be transparent about the constraints we see there and get feedback from this board about how you'd like to proceed. If we are going to tackle a number of these issues, we would need to conduct a deeper schedule analysis to really figure out how much of this is about insufficient time in the day, how much is about insufficient numbers of staff, and how much is about inconsistent scheduling policies and expectations. And that's all part of the same, when you're trying to figure out a daily schedule for middle, any school. We also want to look at the implications of a longer school day at the middle school level. That would mean increased teacher pay potentially, impact on morale, as well as the impact on transportation routes and times. And we want to look at credentialing. So if we add more courses, that can change the credentialing at the middle school level. So as, we need to make sure that we stay in compliance with regulations, but that our students have qualified teachers to teach those courses. And we, we feel like we have, we'd have to vet several proposals with families, teachers, and staff to really understand the impact. To do this right, we believe is just going to take more time. So what we're proposing is a level of change for next year and a Phase II for 2021. So for this coming year, we want to ensure that we're in compliance with all state requirements, including the minimum time for PE and health or physical movement, the amount of time for any high school courses that are offered, and access to at least four elective courses each year. And those might be either a semester, each, or a combination of semester and year-long classes. We also want to focus on ensuring a baseline of equity in terms of advanced courses at each middle school, as well as any electives. I want to come back to that in just a minute. And then we want to plan a model schedule for division-wide adoption in 2021. So what this could mean is, if there is a school that wants to take on a pilot or take on a model schedule, and both Solomon and Autumn have worked through a couple of scenarios that might be able to meet some of these interests, it would require a school taking on, again, a pilot of that schedule, but we would not feel comfortable rolling that all out at this point in the year. I do want to come back to equity of course offerings. I know there's been some questions about whether or not students have enough electives and the like. I did an analysis of our schools' schedules in terms of course offerings, and a couple of just things I want to share. Two of our middle schools, so Benford offers 25 unique elect, unique fine arts and CTE credits, plus additional PE and health. So of those fine arts and CTE electives are 69 sections of 25 unique courses for three grade levels. MLK offers 24 unique courses for fine arts and CTE and 48 sections. Hill, Henderson, Alcart, Thompson, and Bouchal offer 18 unique courses, and Brown offers 16 unique courses. So there's a range between 16 unique courses in terms of fine arts and CTE and 25 fine arts and CTE. So that's kind of, that's a rather large delta to solve for. In terms of Spanish, only Hill, Brown, and Bouchal offer Spanish II. And for Spanish I, or Spanish I and I B, which is also credit-bearing, Brown offers 16 of those sections. Ben offers nine, and Hill offers eight, whereas Henderson, MLK, Bouchal, and Alcart each offer two. So even where, that's an example of where we're offering the same courses, schools are relative sized, there's fewer sections. And then for math and science, all of our middle schools luckily do offer Algebra I. Those section numbers vary. So three of our schools have three sections of Algebra I, three offer only one section. Three of our schools offer Geometry, and four do not. And despite being a compatible size, MLK, for example, offers only one section of Algebra and one section of Earth Science, where other middle schools offer three sections of Earth Science. So when we think about prioritizing equity, it seems to us the most important priority is around equity of the advanced course offerings, as well as the sections. So with that, I will pause and take questions.
I'll welcome. I thank you for looking into this. This has been something that I've heard about since before I was on the board, and I agree with you, the equity issue is appalling. And I think it's top priority that we fix at least the equity issue for next year, but I have a real concern about the rigor of all of our schools, as I know you do too, and the fact that our, our peers in the counties are being offered six to seven classes a day in middle school, and we're only offering five with this awkward 45-minute study hall. I just have a problem with it. I wouldn't want it for my kid, and I don't, I understand some of the justification of it, but I really just, it feels strange that we don't have another class period during that time, and I believe that we should have that rigor for our kids. And I have, you know, probably 40 or so parents have talked to me over the course of the last year about this, so I don't know how everyone else is hearing about it in their districts, I'm interested in the board's thoughts, but I, I definitely think this, I hate to say it, because I know you have so much on, especially after the last presentation, but I think this is a priority too, and I don't know how we choose to not do this and not fix this for next year.
So one, just one note is, not all of our schools have that schedule. As I said, one of the challenges, they all have different schedules. And I think we're in alignment that having a 45-minute block of time that's not used for an official elective is certainly not time, that is certainly time that can be reclaimed, either for an intervention period or for an additional exploratory elective. The only way to add an additional credit-bearing elective would be to add 15 minutes to the day. Now, Mr. Jefferson and Dr. Neighbors have been exploring an alternative schedule that, that would give us extended ELA and math time, but would rotate science and social studies, and then free up essentially a significant amount of time for the elective choices. Again, that's, that would be a significant scheduling change, but, so I think at a minimum, we want to work with schools to make sure there's not a, there should be, at a minimum, six periods, if not seven. But we do, we also want to retain a, some time built in for individual remediation or support. The other thing that we didn't talk about that would be an aspiration is, given some of the just school culture and climate challenges of our middle school, and the needs that our students have around social-emotional learning, is adding in an advisory period. And so thinking through some of those scenarios. Again, we have, we have ideas and proposals on how that could proceed. Our dilemma is the, the timing, and again, I would direct, I would love to hear, you know, feedback from you all about that. And again, I would direct, I would love to hear, you know, feedback from you all about that.
Ms. Owen, Ms. Gibson, oh, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. I don't know when you sleep, but I appreciate. I appreciate all the effort that's gone into all that you're doing. I will just say quickly that Benford, being a model school for the arts, sort of seems to me that would have some more options in those areas. But I am appalled that there are schools that only offer one section of Algebra I. I, I just, I, I just cannot wrap my head around that. So I don't know that we have to have the model schedule with a longer day next year, but we do need to offer more than one section of Algebra I and whatever else that gets our kids where they need to be. I mean, this just seems so basic to me, and I don't understand how we got here, but here we are. I, I will say this about the sort of advisor period. I volunteer, volunteered the last couple of years in middle school, not in, not in Richmond. And they had an advisory period in the middle of the day, and it was total waste of time. What I do think, and I know it's been tried in some places, to go back to the thing from my youth, which was homeroom. And you have the same homeroom teacher for the whole time you're in school. That is a person who notices if all of a sudden you're different. So it's sort of an advisory period because, you know, you're, especially if it's first thing in the morning, you're finishing up your homework, and the teacher can be checking in with the kids in that homeroom class. So that's just a thought. I know that if, there's some school systems that are doing that, but I would not suggest just throwing it in the middle of the day or at the end of the day, because I have seen that in action, and it didn't work well. We certainly need to meet the standards for PE and health. So all these things that you have for Phase One, I think we absolutely must do. I am willing to postpone the model schedule for the following year and adding length to the school day. We're already having issues with the preschool extended day. You know, this is going to be a real conversation about changing our days. And it's not just middle school and preschool, it's high school. And it may be switching things around. So I think we need time to come up with a really good plan for scheduling our day. So that would be, I'm, I'm, thank you for all this. Let's get Phase One done, and I'm okay with waiting for Phase Two.
Ms. Gibson, Mr. Young, Ms. Cosby.
Thank you. So this, this, this agenda item has been a long time coming for me. Just to, you know, recap, this discussion started in July when the, we were talking about middle school classes for high school. And so, and it was my understanding that some of those adjustments happened in the bell schedule to address that issue. And, and, and so we were told that there would be follow-up discussion. And so I've been concerned that that hasn't happened. And my colleagues know I was advocating very strongly for an agenda item to have this discussion in September, again, to have this discussion in November. And the reason for it is because there, there are budget implications here. And so, again, as we are nearing the time to finalize our budget, I, I am at a loss that there is no funding allocated in our budget now to address this need, which is state-mandated. You know, there, we had a local delegate in local coalition who advocated very strongly for, for more recess time, for more physical education time. That is now dictated by law. And at the middle school level, it's my understanding that we have students that are only taking one year of gym. And so, but yet it says, you know, in, in state law, that we have to be taking three. And, and I can, you know, read that if that would be helpful to do. So, so my question is, you know, we're talking about three times as many students enrolled in gym. We, where are the dollars to be able to fund that? I think that, you know, it was my understanding last year that some principals at least requested more teaching staff at the middle school level. I, I would like to find out indeed, you know, what the staffing requests were, because I think it would be hooves to make the recommendation and to move the dollars around as needed to be able to make that investment. And this is very much an equity issue. We reviewed, there was a, you know, an equity audit that this board reviewed collectively. And, and it was my understanding that that was just a Phase One. We haven't had discussion about Phase Two. I think we certainly should. And, and so where is the work that we've done? Because, you know, we, we can't just be doing audits. We've got to make some change. And, and now is the time. We do not have a guarantee of funding for next year. So if there are issues that need to be addressed, we need to do our due diligence to make sure that we address those now. Thank you.
Ms. Young.
Yeah, thank you. Just real briefly, want to try to connect this conversation with the preceding conversation. And I recall, like was referenced in the preceding conversation, when we started, when we started the ball rolling on transcripts and acknowledged that we had a lot of students that were awarded credits that shouldn't have been. I recall there was some conversation pertinent to students that had taken classes in middle school and shouldn't have been awarded credit, but they were for, for their high school transcript. And it, can you, let me share my perspective, and then tell me if, if I'm wrong reflecting on what I just spoke to. But it was seen to me 15 minutes is, in the cost-benefit analysis, certainly merits the opportunity to achieve another, another class, another credit-bearing class. But my question, my question is, which of those, which of those classes are able to, to transfer to the high school transcript? And, and if the answer is what I think it, it is, I'll go ahead and say it now, couldn't that alleviate some of the concerns that we just spoke to in that last round of inquiries?
Sure. Well, the, the current middle school schedule, we did address the 140 clock hour rule this year, which then created a trade-off with some of the electives. And while I think there's different perspectives on why this has been called, like why there is a belief that we need, you know, a different schedule, part of that disruption was caused by fixing the 140 seat hour rule for the high school credit electives, because we knew that that was important to families. So by fixing one piece, it then sort of did affect another piece. I think there are ways that we can get around that. I don't think it's only one way. So I think we can continue to try to, as, you know, as Ms. Dorson said, I don't think that inherently means we can't have a sixth-class day. So I think one is we have a little bit more time to work with schools on some of those things that do not necessarily require different staffing or additional funding. So we did address that this year. So you will, you should not see, if, if the schedules are, you know, what, what is happening is what is on paper. You should not see a high school credit-bearing course that is not offered for the minimum seat hours. But that did disrupt the elective schedule, because most electives typically are less time. The courses that we're talking about generally are Art I, Spanish I, Spanish II, Algebra I, geometry or science or biology typically, maybe one or two CTE courses, depending on the school.
Ms. Cosby.
Can you repeat for MLK again?
Just the, the general, anything in particular or just in general? So MLK does offer 24 unique fine arts and CTE courses, 48 sections total. They offer, MLK offers Spanish I and/or Spanish I A, I B. I A is typically taken, say, in sixth grade. I B is taken in seventh grade, and once you pass I B, you get the full credit. So they split it over two years to make that work. And then for math and science, MLK does not offer geometry. It offers one section of Algebra and one section of Earth Science.
One section of Algebra?
Each, and one of Earth Science. That's it.
Okay, so, yeah, I just think there's certain things have to be done quickly. We know that, we are in an MOE predicated on MLK. The time it's going to take MLK to be, what's the word?
Fully accredited.
Fully accredited. It is to me, I mean, I'm not just standing because it's in my district. I'm not. If it weren't somebody else, it's just priority, I think. And making sure, well, we talk about that equity audit all the time. It's not applicable, and I think things have to be done next year. I've asked about year-round school, were some other options to be creative? And, you know, we can't keep pushing this cannon down the road. We cannot.
Ms. Burke, and then Mr. Young, and then Ms. Gibson.
How is it determined what schools have what classes that are being offered? For instance, with MLK, I would like to know, I know we don't have this in front of me, how many students are enrolled in Algebra, because that's technically a high school course, correct? So the students have a choice whether they want it, what determines how many Algebra classes, geometry classes, what, what determines, how is that done?
So I'll answer, and then you want to correct me? So the truth is, we do not have codified scheduling practices. So what typically determines it is either test scores or teacher recommendations about students who they think are ready for Algebra. What would you add?
Yeah, and so that is the case, but I think the other piece is also being a principle of schools such as MLK. We actually looked at some kids that we could actually push. We lifted the expectations to actually put them into Algebra I, with the caveat of additional support and communicating with parents, right? So it's this piece of looking at what's possible for some kids and providing the support for them to actually be successful. If you look at some of our neighboring divisions across the country, one of the new pieces that the research is showing is Algebra I for all eighth graders. It's being used in a lot of divisions to really push the lever. So, but that would actually take an adjustment to our master schedule, because it can't be done in 15 minutes to teach Tier One instruction in addition to providing interventions, and then also in some cases remediation for kids that are further behind. So that is to push for more time, what we call a double block schedule, which most of our communities have surrounding us. So, I mean, there is a way to get more kids in Algebra I. We just have to be strategic in how we do it, but also it's coupled with that SOL test and their math performance.
Also to address that is the inconsistency of what, that starts in sixth grade. And so students are inconsistently placed in the higher-level honors track to get to Algebra. So it starts, we have to start with our, our sixth graders coming in too. And so sometimes it's test scores, sometimes it's recommendations. So we need to have better practices with our sixth graders coming in to get them the most rigorous coursework so all of our students can be successful for Algebra I at eighth grade.
And if we were to, I'm thinking about how many students that live in MLK's own, but they go to other schools. So that's, that, that's a part of it as well.
So, and the scheduling guidance and the equity around scheduling is exactly what we want to focus on between now and the beginning of the school year for middle school, and to have some controls in place to make sure that we're starting with, again, where can we get more students in advanced courses with supports? And then simultaneously looking at our vertical curriculum and our alignment and looking at, I mean, this goes K-8 really, but starting with sixth grade, how do we really reimagine and maybe look at the over-tracking we're doing in sixth grade, which is setting up two different paths for students when they come into middle school?
I have a long list, but if you have a number, Dr. Sapini, I mean, he's turned his seat, so I'll defer to him, and then go back to Young, Gibson, Cosby.
Thank you. My, my question may be a little challenging, but if you can't answer it, please visualize. How many students from MLK has either been able to, well, has been able to be accepted, let alone apply, to any of the specialty high schools?
You guys want to take that? I can take that. So I can get you the exact application numbers. I can't, but then in terms of acceptance, first of all, I love the question, and it's one of the things that I am eager to tackle in this division, is equity around our special, specialty school process.
My people, you're talking about, sorry.
Sure.
Equity, eligibility, let alone success in entrance, let alone, you know, after the fact. And that's major, and I'm just picking on MLK, but we were just talking about it. But if you look at all the other middle schools, that's, that's problematic. If you talk about equity, if you can't even, because with the specialty schools, as of course you know, if you have not had Algebra I, don't, don't you worry.
Exactly.
So you basically, well, not you, but essentially, how students and families are basically set up, you're not going to make the cuts, don't worry, stay in your league.
One of the, I really love the question, and it's one of the things, again, I really am eager to tackle. In our strategic plan for Year One, it calls for tackling, bringing on additional capacity to really dig into this equity question around advanced opportunities for all of our students, starting with the specialty school process, but not limited to that, but starting there. So that work will, that work will begin.
Thank you.
Ms. Young.
I was just going to weigh in and say, first, I agree with Felicia that I'm, my heart says I'd love to do it for next year, my head says that's probably not prudent. But I look forward to supporting a longer school day. So long, been on record for that. And I hope that we can have a conversation at some point about more than 180 days, because I believe we need that too. Thank you.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. Cosby.
Thank you. Couple things, one is the, as it pertains to physical education in particular, to high school.
The high school?
Yeah, is it, I mean, I would presume we have similar issues at high school, or is it offered at every year at high school? I just want to.
The requirement is a ninth-grade course and a 10th-grade course. Students have additional opportunities with those requirements.
So we're meeting that expectation now?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Assuming the students have been appropriately scheduled per the previous conversation.
Ms. Cosby.
Dr. Sapini kind of addressed my question. I'll just make a comment that I am very anxious for us to continue, I'm very anxious as we continue to look at our rigor and that we really, with a sense of urgency, look at disrupting the cycle of low expectations. To even just have those limited courses at MLK, and it's just, you're just, as Dr. Sapini alluded to, you're just perpetuating, you're you're just perpetuating, you, we, you know, the district, this, this cycle of low expectations. And we've got to stop it now.
And I guess the last piece that I'll add is, you know, this year I've spent at least 80% of my time in middle schools and have really been closely watching this and trying to pinpoint how we support principals better, but better again, how we support our kids better. And there are two things that I know are best practices in that work. And the two things, especially for kids that come from low SES, but also if we look at our kids that are higher achievers, some of them still haven't maxed out because we haven't provided the time within the instructional day for them. And so I will say, I mean, there are examples right across the river of schools that have had similar challenges with behavior and demographics that have moved to double block scheduling for reading and math. And it has gotten results. In addition to that, they had advisory, but advisory that works. Advisory is a national theme for middle schools because they're going through changes, they're going through development, right? So they need that individual teacher that they can actually, a group of people that their peers they can be with to build soft skills. Because the thing that we know we're missing, how did they use social media appropriately? If we don't have intentional conversations about that, we'll continue to have kids that do things that are inappropriate, that get suspended and they lose more instructional time. So the answer to advisory is we do need to have that 30 to 45-minute block, but it needs to be intentional. And the lesson I learned as a principal was I actually had to plan it for my teachers, right? So I got with them during the summer and said, let's talk about the things, topics we want to talk about for the first semester. And we created a curriculum for it. So all teachers had to do was actually click on the PowerPoint, click on the handouts, click on videos, whatever it was. It was there on the calendar, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It wasn't something else that teachers had to do. I always got frustrated about buying agenda books and kids would lose the agenda books the second day of school. But no one ever taught them how to use a planner. So that's why they lost it and didn't use it effectively. So I think this piece, I can agree that the 30 to 45 minutes, people say it's a waste of time. The way it's done now, it may be a waste of time because it's not done intentionally. But if people put in the work in the summer from the front end to make sure that it's there for teachers to actually access or the, my expectation was that they review the lessons 30 minutes, you know, during their Friday before they roll them out. But advisory is a good piece. And the other piece that we do have working in some of our schools is teaming. So we actually have teams, like the A-team and B-team. They call them different, unique things. But that keeps teams, that keeps students, especially sixth graders, to a transition from elementary school to four adults that they can actually deal with and have relationships with. So advisory, I mean, I know that 30, 45 minutes seem like it's a waste of time, but for the majority of our students, we need that to build soft skills. We also need it for intervention. And we need more time during the instructional day, especially in reading and math, to help our students get better. But we also have to train our teachers how to use that 80 or 90-minute block. We just can't assume that they will do better if they have an additional 30 minutes. We have to train them how to do that.
Please forgive me if this was already mentioned, but just to piggyback off what Ms. Cosby as well as Mr. Young mentioned, based on being able to implement this ASAP, please share with us your updates as to what your needs are to make sure we get this implemented as soon as possible on a regular basis, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item was 4.07, receive an update on staffing.
Good evening, members of the school board. I'm here this evening to provide an update on staffing, specifically on teacher vacancies and on the reduction in force. So listed here is the number and the percentages of vacancies that we have at all school levels. As you can see, we are in the 60% range in terms of vacancies left to fill. We may see a slight uptick in these numbers once contracts are issued. But at the end of May last year, we had 27 more vacancies than we have right now. So we seem to be trending downward. As far as the reduction in force is concerned, a brief update. Thus far, as listed here, 14 of the 74 impacted employees on the list have been placed in current RPS vacancies. Five have retired and two have resigned. The three agencies that RPS has partnered with to provide resources and support to our displaced workers offer services ranging from healthcare to coaching on job interviewing techniques. Thus far, we've held two workshops with these three agencies, both of which were well-attended, and a third is being scheduled for the first week in June.
Can you, can you tell me with these numbers, how many are long-term subs or in subs basically?
How many of the vacancies are subs?
Well, not as a vacancy, but, I mean, I'm being billed by a sub right now. I'm wondering for the number of substitutes that we currently have.
I can get that number for you, but I do believe we do have subs in the majority of these vacancies.
If I, if I may, I believe this information is projections for next year. These are not existing, these are not where, these are not currently vacant classrooms. These are where we anticipate vacancies for next year based on the letters of intent, resignation letters, things of that nature.
Some of them are.
Some of them are.
Some of them are current, yes, and they are staffed by subs.
Whatever information you can get, that'd be great. Whatever information you can get us, that'd be great pertaining to substitutes.
Sure.
Thank you. So I, I just, a couple of things. One, I just want to reiterate my request, and this is me being a very dead horse, I guess that's the cliche, regarding teacher retention and really wanting to get our hands on that data about, about what teacher retention has been. And I think we should probably go back several years and kind of get that school-by-school data. Is that something we're measuring in our strategic plan?
Yes.
And then I also wanted to request that we get the positions of the folks that are noted on page three so we know which of the positions have been then already, you know, so, you know, moved into a vacancy, you know, another vacancy or folks retired. That would be helpful in terms of our budget discussions. And, and then I guess the other piece I think is important for us to track, again, as it pertains to equity, is the tenure of the folks that we're hiring and how that has been tracking. I think oftentimes when we talk about, you know, the average salary that we have as a state and that we have as a city, you know, that is driven very much by teacher retention and tenure. And so I think that would be important to capture as well. And then as it pertains to communication to staff of those folks that may be impacted by the, the reduction in force, which I would like to minimize, I, I would like to understand what specifically is being communicated in the workshops. And for folks that are not able to go to workshops, what information are they getting? Because I continue to receive outreach from, from people that, that feel very left in the dark in terms of what their options are, what the procedures are, and, and, you know, where they can get support and information. So, so I'd like to get a little bit more information on that.
We do have communications that are planned to go out this week to everybody that's been affected. And in addition to that, we do have another session for those folks that were not able to attend any of the resource sessions that we had. We do have another session that's coming up in the first week of June. We're not sure which day that week, but it will be communicated broadly once we have finalized that date. But the communication that's going out will also include all of the information that is being communicated in those sessions, the resources and the tools that are being offered to folks.
May I also request that the communication include the update regarding our board budget process? So if there are members of the staff that would like to speak at a, at a public meeting, that they are aware of what our process is in terms of finalizing these decisions.
Sure. Thank you.
I'm just trying to miss something, but in terms of the, thank you for the update with the vacancies. But, um, did you go over the, uh, what could I call it today? Like, do you have, you go back mostly, but you all have in pool, the pool candidates? Are you going to? Going forward, we have a few days that are scheduled with people that have applied for vacant positions. We have two that are scheduled for the next two weeks. And beyond that, we will be scheduling with intermittent film vacancies. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, school board chair, vice chair, superintendent cameras and school board members. I'd like to share with you a brief update. We call it the new staffing update for the Actus of Engagement. And I think that Actus of Engagement is a newly created actus that is based on the belief that we will only be successful and improve my acting for our students with deep partnership between family and community. We approach this acta through our adults, family, you, as well as our members in the community. And we strive to do three things, partner with families, strengthen our school capacity, as well as collaborate with the community. And we ask for more hiring, parent, communication is in regards to engagement. And we know that strong partnership is only defined by having good communication with our families and community so that we can ensure accurate information sharing, expectations are understood, and that trust is established. So in our work, living there, what we're going to do, what we're going to be doing is integrating, uh, remaining positions that are family in the communications department, our Actus of Media Relations. We will be integrating that with the Actus of Engagement. And there's extreme synergy with those two actors, specifically that, um, high-impact engagement strategies are big and strong communications. So what I'd like to share with you today is a new organizational chart on front of Actus where you can see communications and media relations specialists, there's a media design specialist, as well as a big media specialist. And they're now a part of the advocacy and outreach team. But now, the communications, when you just say, and it's now advocacy and outreach team, it really will be embedded throughout the Actus. And we know these positions will not only help our technical activities, but it will really help grow the team so that we have more people focus and how we effectively engage with our families and community. So living there are the three goals that we want to continue to do and go a little bit deeper. The first one is to empower. We want to empower bases to advocate for equity as well as supporting our students and teachers. We've started some of that work with our city and state advocacy, but we really want to take it to another level next year and focus on not only family advocacy training, which we pioneered in our family academy this month. But we want to do a intentional focus on giving our students embed. Our Actus is going to be taking over and running our student advisory council. And we want students to be at the table when we are making important decisions that affect their futures. And we feel that by really building advocacy across them, as well as our families, and they'll move us in the right direction. Secondly, we want to inform, this is something we heard loud and clear this year through our work in our parent advisory council. Our council moved this year to having focused groups that was solution-oriented based on our strategic plan. We received a lot of great feedback and we're going to continue these groups next year. But over and over in the community, we hear that the best way to really inform our community with accessible and relevant resources and information is to strengthen our school and district websites. So we are committing that by opening school year 1920, that we can work to have all of our school websites with really clear information so that we can have some uniformity, as well as really think about what does equity look like in terms of information. Right now, we have some schools that have a plethora of information and others that may not have a principal message, right? So how can we really focus on, based on best practice, what we've seen nationally, what are some core tenants that we want every website to have? Provide some modeling and technical assistance and then continue to grow that. And we want to make sure that we're also modeling that on our district and office webpages. And then thirdly, our advocacy and outreach goal is to do a better job of just sharing our stories. We have amazing things going on in RPS and we need to be able to tell that story, whether it's our Brother United mentoring program that was launched. But also as we implement our dreams for RPS, we want to be very clear with the community how we're using our money, how we are initiating and tracking our programs. And a big part of that is going to be continually telling our story. So these are three goals we want to empower, we want to inform, and we want to share. And we feel by integrating communications into our engagement efforts, not only will we have a bigger team to do this work, but we will have more of the technical assistance to do this work well. So thank you, and at this time I'll take any questions.
Mr. Young?
I don't have a question. Just I love the realignment. Makes all the sense in the world. The best storytellers are the persons that are closest to the story that was told. So it makes sense to put all of our communications people in the same, in the same house, if you will, with the folks who are trying to do the advocacy and build and create. So I love the realignment, awesome.
Question for you. So, um, one of the school districts have this type of model with the communications and the advocacy?
There are several other districts that communications, like that department is built in their family and community engagement work. So there is precedence for this model. But I think in terms of how RPS does it, I think we can be even more innovative in thinking about how we can really rebrand our school websites so that we have chief storytellers in every schools, where we can have students on the ground, whether it's through journalism departments, really start creating the content that can go on our websites. So while there is. So while there is precedence, I think we can be really innovative in what we do here. Thank you.
The next item is 4.07, received for the first review, the comprehensive 2019-2020 salary schedule.
I am here to present the proposed salary schedules for the 1920 school year. And firstly, the teacher's salary scale, assuming school board adoption, first, there's a proposed 1.17% step increase for each year of service, plus a 3% raise for school year For the two-year period, fiscal years 19 and 20, this brings the increase amount to 5%. And the proposed teacher's salary scale has been added as Appendix A. You'll note that the scale has been slightly modified from what was presented on May 6 to show hourly rates, which in a couple of cases creates a slight variance in annual salaries, and that variance is no more than $5. As far as the teachers, I apologize, the principal's salary scale is concerned, again, assuming school board adoption, there is a proposed 1.17% step increase for principals for each year of service, plus a 3% raise for school year 1920. I apologize. It's actually a decompression formula that's been embedded in order to remain competitive with surrounding school divisions and increase recruitment and retention. Most elementary principals' starting salaries will increase from $84,631 to $91,900. Starting salaries for most middle school principals will increase from $88,874 to And for most high school principals, the starting salaries will go from $93,308 to Added to this will be the 1.17% step increase, 1.7% step increase for each year of service as a principal, and for each half-year served as an assistant principal of a senior school or a senior school official. To clarify from the last meeting, the principal clarifications, principal 1 is a classification for elementary schools and schools with average daily membership of under 250. Principal 2 classification will be for middle schools, and principal 3 will apply to high schools, schools grade 6 through 12, and schools with multiple locations, and schools with AD average daily membership over 750. And that, the full principal salary scale proposal is listed as Exhibit B. The next salary scale is the nurses' salary scale. The proposed salary scale for nurses, again, assuming school board adoption, is again aimed at competing with surrounding divisions and filling all nursing positions. The proposal offers starting salaries that go from $27,479 to $48,834 for RNs, BSNs, and MSNs, with the LPN starting salary going from $24,929 to $31,475. It also includes a 1.17% annual step increase, offering RNs, BSNs, and MSNs a year of credit for each year served as an RN, and half a year of credit for each year served as an LPN. Our LPNs will receive a year of credit for each year served as an LPN. The contracts for RNs, BSNs, and MSNs will change from seven to eight hours per day, and from nine and a half weeks, nine and a half months, rather, to 10 months per year. LPN contracts will change from nine and a half months to 10 months, with no change in daily hours. For all nurses, it's important to note that the percentage of pay increase exceeds by far the percentage of increase in hours. And during fiscal year 20, all nurses will have the ability to opt out of this new pay scale and the additional hours if desired. And that salary scale, the nurse salary scale, is available as Appendix C. Finally, the proposed unified salary scale for all remaining staff includes a 3% raise for school year 1920, which is listed as well on Appendix D. Any questions?
Dr. Sapien?
How many, under the umbrella of nurses, how many nurses do we have?
That's a good question.
And the second part of that question is, how many CNAs are under that category?
Can I get those numbers for you?
Go.
Okay.
It makes a big difference.
I'll get those, so we can send them out. Other questions?
Next item is 4.09, received for action, the recommended 2018-2019 summer school program and schedule.
At our last board meeting, we presented the plans for summer school, and taking your feedback into account, we incorporated those changes. So we have changed the feeder pattern for Chimborazo by, with Chimborazo and Holton. And we changed the location from, for Green to Broad Rock, so thank you for that feedback. This is the only change, I believe, since our last conversation, so I wanted to see if there are any additional questions.
Do you have a rough idea of the number of students we should, would expect to be taking summer school this year versus last year?
So we've been projecting those numbers based on the data we have for student achievement data. We obviously don't have all the SOL data in yet because it's happening right now. We're projected for each of the elementary sites approximately 300, and 300 for the middle school sites. We, I do think there's been, one of the pieces of feedback I've received recently was, there was confusion as to that there were limits on enrollment, and we've clarified that any student who needs remediation will receive summer school. If there are families who want summer school as enrichment, we are working to figure out a sort of waitlist process, but we need to give priority to any student who needs, who needs a intervention. So we developed an initial list based on mid-year and spring data, and then we've provided that to schools and have asked schools to add any additional names, or if there are teacher recommendations, for whatever reason, based on the data they have, and then we'll rerun the numbers after the SOL scores. So we have sent out preliminary letters to a whole group of families. And in terms to answer comparatively, I don't have clean data from last year.
Okay, thank you. So my impression was that there were certain, there are certain evaluation methods that are used to pre-identify certain students who would be going into summer school, but you're saying that teacher recommendations, I wouldn't want to say override, but if the teacher recommends a student, then that student may get in despite that?
Yeah, yes. So, and I think there was some confusion about that, but I received feedback from our teacher advisory council last week, and so we put in place a process of, here's our list based on our data cut points. If there are additional students based on, if there might be students who are in the, what we call the SBIT or Child Study Process, you can add students from there, and then if there are additional students that you would add based on teacher recommendation, those can be considered, as long as it's based on academic needs or social needs. Sometimes there are families who are requesting summer school purely for enrichment, and while we'd like to provide that for every student, we're not yet available, ready to do that. But yes, teachers can recommend a student for summer school based on their academic or social needs.
Thank you.
You certainly addressed my concern, and I've never seen a layout like this before. I commend you on what you've done. Many of our children will have the opportunity to be moved around. It's going to be interesting, but I like the mix. I like the mix. So when we speak in terms, speak in terms of equity, when my children at Woodville attend Holton, they may not want to come back to Woodville, because it's a brand-new school in comparison to where they are. So I'm delighted they'll have a chance to see better, but I hope that our summer school lead persons will be in tune to make sure that every child has the opportunity to be successful.
Absolutely. Thank you for the suggestion.
I'm just wondering, what accommodations, hopefully, if any, are being made for our ESL students pertaining to summer school? Because I would imagine, hopefully, that there will be more teachers and staff capable of giving them that more of a one-on-one, because it's less students at the summer school. So do we have anything in place for that?
Yes, we do have plans specifically in place for English learners, both for English language acquisition, as well as content support, and I can provide additional, I can provide follow-up information, but we do have a targeted program for our English learners for the summer with smaller ratios. One of the things we're trying to think through is how much of the day, try to think about integration with general education students, so that students are not segregated the whole day. So we're wrestling through some of those details right now, in terms of what's the right balance. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware that we needed to vote on action, but okay.
Can I get a motion to approve the summer school program and schedule?
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for the summer school schedule and alignment.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the administration's 2018-2019 summer school program and schedule. Any discussion? Call the vote.
Mr. Borla?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
I've seen.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Weller?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes at 7:0. The next item is 4.10, received for action, personnel actions.
The recommended talent office actions for the school board meeting scheduled for Monday, May 20, 2019, include the change of contract of 15 employees, the transfers of one employee, the resignations of 28 employees, the furlough of 12 employees, the returning from leave of eight employees, the retirement of 26 employees, the termination of two employees, and the death of one employee.
Do school board members have any questions for close? If not, can I get a motion? You have a question for open, Ms. Owen?
I just want to know what LWOP and LOA, Leave Without Pay and Leave Without Sense?
Can I get a motion? If there are no questions, can I get a motion to approve the HR action? Ms. Burke?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the HRD actions for approval as listed.
It's been moved by Ms. Burke, with seconded by Ms. Owen, to approve the personnel actions. Any discussion? Call the vote.
Mr. Borla?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Motion passes 8:0. The next item is item 5, the budgetary actions, receive updates to the 2019-2020 budget and the 2018-2023 CFP budgets.
Thank you to our student representative for sticking it out, we appreciate it, and we'll see you next meeting. Great.
I'm joined by Lynn Braga, who is our Executive Director of Budget and Finance, to provide an overview of where we currently stand with our FY '20 budget. Just to begin, I just want to acknowledge the fact that council unanimously approved our FY '20 budget request. Really excited about that, and that we're all pretty much heads over heels about the good that these funds can do for our kids. And I really want to thank the board, the folks in the audience, community members, teachers, everybody who advocated for this to happen. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. Moving down, since we last discussed budget, there have been several additional new budget pressures that I wanted to bring to your attention. To start things off, the state share of the teacher raise has been reduced by about $60,000, which we are accounting for as a reduction in our revenue. The big one here is that the city is no longer planning to reduce the number of health plans from three to two. And because our PS is linked to the city system, we are also going to maintain three health plans going into next year. And we do plan to absorb the increase in premium costs for both the employer and the employee heading into next year. Using actuals for next year's premium rates, we estimate this will cost an additional $1 million in healthcare for FY '20. Moving down, the transportation team is unable to break his contract to get out of the uniform leasing arrangement that we currently have. We have one more year to go, and we're locked into that for the next year, so we can reduce that $40,000 as well. There's also been a $44,000 increase in the Appomattox Regional Governor School tuition rates, which we're accounting for. And falling into the good problem-to-have category, we need to backfill a position at Virgie Benford while Mr. Robertson carries out his duties as the National Teacher of the Year. So all in all, it's about $1.3 million in additional pressures. In order to account for these new pressures, first, we recommend reducing the allocation for the legacy early retirement plan by $700,000. There's currently fewer than 100 teachers in this plan, and the annual liability is about $1 million. Second, we recommend reducing the allocation for Camelot by about $300,000, and I think this tracks well with our current yearly enrollment in that program. Third, we plan to increase revenue projections by about $100,000. So we conservatively project an additional 20K in revenue coming in through key card rebates, about $14,000 from facility rentals, assuming that we get a modest increase in rates, which we'll bring to the next board meeting, and about $50,000 from the sale of fleet vehicles and out-of-service buses. One of the benefits of purchasing new buses is that we're able to get rid of some of our older ones, which we plan to, we start doing this summer. And then another $20,000 from vendor rebates. And then to finally close the gap, we plan to access $175,000 in Ba Ba Funds, and that'll get us to the 1.277645 that we need to close the gap. There's been a lot of questions and requests for page 23 from last year's budget document. We have replicated that document, it's no longer a one-page document, all the change that occurred this year, and that's also included in your materials. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Simmons, good job as always. The legacy pension, this is the same pension fund that last year we elected to essentially defer monies on?
That's correct.
So you referenced, there are only, I think I heard you say there are only 100 retirees that are tied to that account?
Currently, there's about 92, 97 or so currently in the plan, but there's more than 100 or so eligible. So if all 100 or so...
About 200, really?
About.
And so what's our, do we know what our unfunded, there's an unfunded liability for us? Do we know what that number is?
So if everybody were to join the plan, we would need the full $1.7 million. We don't think that's...
If everyone were to opt in, and we have 128 people that are still eligible that haven't opted in yet, we'd need about $3 million to pay off the liability. And then we would need a modest amount compared to this. We'd need between $300,000 and $400,000 annually to help manage the fund. We'd have to pay, I think it's held with Wells Fargo, and they issue the checks to our retirees, and so we'd have a modest amount that we'd have to pay them every year to manage this trust fund.
So, if I may, I don't want to monopolize all the time, but thank you. So at some point, at some point, barring some unforeseen circumstance, we know that we'll need, you said like $3 to $4 million upfront, and then a recurring approximately $300,000 to $400,000?
But remember, this plan, those that opt in, they're in it typically for four years, and then they'll sunset the plan. So we know that during 2020, coming up, that we will have 33 people sunset. But it's, some are in August, some are in September, some are November, I think there's a few in January and then April. So they're staggered throughout the year. What I don't have a handle on at this moment in time is how many are going to opt in. Don't obviously expect 128 to opt in. And it's typically because the teacher opts in when the contract expires, and for us, that happens in August.
So just to close my part of the conversation, when we agreed at the last meeting that we were going to include another meeting for budget conversation, I was introduced by Scott, I think the last time we met. If it's a will of the group, I would love to see an alternative for that $700,000, an alternative way to address that hole, that $700,000 hole. If it's a will of the group. If it's not the will of the group, yours truly will introduce an alternative.
Is it a will of the group to see an alternative to that $700,000?
If I may, if that is certainly the will of the board, we'll be more than happy to fulfill that request. I do want to note that we would then be identifying $700,000 of other items from the non-strategic plan budget to put forward as a cut. So given the depth of the cuts we have already made, we didn't feel that was prudent at this time, but if that is the will of the board, we certainly will go ahead and take that step.
Ms. Gibson?
I would like to note that in terms of the, you know, finding cost savings, we have yet to dig into the strategic plan to see if there's any way we can do anything more cost-effectively. And I think that we would be remiss not to look under every rock to be able to fund the things that we need. I share the concerns regarding pension, and, you know, I've also identified other places where I believe we should put some priority. And so, you know, the strategic plan, those numbers were put together in December, and I'd like to think that there's been some continued work since then. And I'd like to ensure that, you know, we have the opportunity to look everywhere, to make sure that we have an opportunity to collectively prioritize.
If I may, and certainly we'll get into this, I'm assuming in much greater detail on June 3rd and June 4th, it's the administration's perspective, certainly though, will follow the will of the board, that given that we advocated for the additional funding specifically for the strategic plan, and council approved it specifically for the strategic plan, that is the administration's view that we should not change what we have enumerated as the expenditures for the strategic plan in any significant way. And so again, if there are other adjustments that do need to be made, certainly if that is the will of the board, my request would be that we entertain some additional cuts from the non-strategic plan operating budget to be able to absorb those. Obviously, I know that that may not be a perspective shared by everybody on the board, but I did want to just note that as a as context for the discussion on June 3rd. Can I just make one other logistical point that's already been raised? The way that the ordinance was written, this RAP plan planning is sitting in a contingency account, and if you were to try to move some of that money from out of that account into the operating budget, it would need to go back to council.
The next item is 5.02, receive for action budget transfers.
Hello again. I have two budget transfer requests for your consideration, both of which are hitting the operations team. The first is to take $331,000 from vacancy savings in ITIS and move those over to contracted services, also in ITIS, to give you a sense of what these funds are being used for, is general network maintenance, sequel development, so very core functions of the IT team. The second budget transfer request is to take $104,000 in vacancy savings from facilities and to split that, to put half of that into maintenance and supplies lines, and the other half to purchase a 50-foot lift for the facilities team. We currently have to coordinate times to borrow the city's lift, or we contract that out. It'll be way more efficient for our operations, and in the long run, save us money to purchase our own lift. Questions?
Yeah, Ms. Young?
I was just going to move that we adopt the budget transfer as proposed.
It's been moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Owen to adopt the budget transfers as proposed. Any discussion? All question?
Mr. Borla?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
I'm seeing.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dole?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. The next item is to receive for action the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to make budget transfers to balance all accounts for fiscal year 18 and 19.
And to close out my time on the hot seat for this evening, the superintendent respectfully requests authorization from the school board to approve budget transfers for year-end closing for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Approval of this request will allow the superintendent to approve budgetary transfers so that the school division is able to close out the year and pay obligations in a timely manner. And as always, all budget transfers through the end of the fiscal year will be recorded and shared with the board and with the public.
It's been moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Owen to receive for, to approve the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to make budget transfers to balance all accounts for fiscal year 18 and 19. Any discussion? Ms. Burke?
Yeah, so with regard, and I know that we have this conversation every year and it's largely formality, but I do want to make sure that we are staying in the loop as much as possible. So do you think we could set a threshold for a certain dollar amount where we would just get a heads up that that's happening, or would that be too burdensome? I don't know what the scope of, you know, the end of year balancing looks like as opposed to, you know, what we're approving here.
Yeah, we certainly can. We also probably be very intentional about getting our big, high-dollar ones done. The transportation earlier, I just did the $300,000 one. We definitely would be able to do something to that magnitude, we can set that threshold if...
Great, thanks.
All question?
Mr. Borla?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapien? Ms. Cosby? Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Dole?
Yes.
Motion passes six one.
Right, thank you.
Next item is... The next item are your other informational items that were posted to board docs for your review, and they were budget transfers just for information, an update on water testing, and an overview of the current adult education programs. The next item is item seven, new business.
Back in the seat of honor. So, yes.
I know it's informational, but it just don't mean, how many schools have had their water tested?
Every school.
Okay, because I know on the word, what it stated that schools that were built before 86 would be done first, so I just want to make sure that all schools were done?
Yes, all the schools were done. We're talking about replacements of the schools that were done after 86, those are ones that were replaced with the hydration, hydration stations and the...
So there are some schools that don't have that, those stations?
They don't have stations, correct.
How many of those are there?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can get that for you.
You know, any of, any other specific school that don't have it?
I don't. I can get that information now. I don't have it off the top of my head, though.
I was thinking about it again, anyway.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So while we're on the topic of the testing, I see that the recommended testing frequency is every year for drinkable sources, and then it says that non-drinkable sources are every three years. Does that include kitchen sinks? Would that be a drinkable source, or?
Kitchen sinks are not considered to be a drinkable source.
They're not?
Right. And we have included signage on the non-drinkable sources that say that this is not a drinkable source, don't...
But are those, does that mean that they're not used for food prep?
They are used for food prep. But we're not, we're also not washing a lot of dishes, a lot of our styrofoam trays in most of our schools, so those go right in the trash. And we are moving from styrofoam to, so that's probably a question.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. I would just like to request that the website be shared with all parents via the weekly email, so that folks know that this information is available and have the ability to review it and feel that they understand how the water is being tested at their individual schools.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We've also just finished our spring testing, which we're excited to share, and those results will be uploaded to the SLLN informational document that'll be shared this summer.
Ms. Burke?
Seventh district is very happy with the new water fountains. Armstrong High School, because they had the same fountains they had from 19, whatever, 65 when the building was built, and a lot of them didn't work. Bellevue, thank you very much, it's a big difference. I love the idea of being able to have the, but their water bottles, the children love the fillers, but it's made a tremendous difference, and thank you so much. The teachers are happy, the students are happy, the water is cold, and it makes a big difference, I think. So thank you, well done.
Any other questions from Mr. Simmons for about new business?
Thank you.
New business. Mr. Young?
Well, I feel bad introducing this topic after Mr. Simmons just took a seat, but at the most recent compact meeting, there was some conversation relevant to JCT, and specifically Bob Studiel spoke to how sub-bids were coming in a lot higher than what we anticipated, and I understand that we'll have an update at the June 3 meeting, a JCT update I'm referring to. But my concern is that, like this evening, I mean, it's a little after 10:00 PM, and for all the reasons that have been spoken to already, we have so much on the agenda, that in the same way we allocated another meeting for the budget, I personally think we need more time to really scrutinize the plans for the three schools, and specifically the opportunity to... the plans for the three schools, and specifically the opportunity to reduce costs that may, I'm concerned, may exceed what our budget will allow for. So my proposal for my colleagues to consider would be that we consider adding another meeting specifically to review and deliberate relative to value engineering opportunities for the three schools. And that we do that sometime soon, because I don't think I need to remind anyone that we're getting ready to start pouring, pouring concrete.
It seemed like the topic for tonight was really equity, equity, equity. And I had the pleasure of attending an elementary school national honor society ceremony. And my question is, how many of our schools, elementary otherwise, has that capability? Do we know by chance? Because I would venture to say that if, let's say, all the schools had that, then I think some of our students and families would, you know, really aspire to be a member. And so just giving as far as, you know, more aspirations and goals, and so if we could look into that to see how many schools have that, and if we can get all of our schools to participate, I know it's something that you have to be accepted into, to be able to offer, but if all our schools don't have it, then that's a problem.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. I would just like to, you know, also share the thought of my colleague, Mr. Young, regarding the JCT meeting. And I would like to consider that if we were to add another meeting, that perhaps we add another meet, because I'm concerned that with a budget meeting on the 4th, that would really give us a lot of time to have discussion prior to a vote. So I would love to consider using the additional meeting on the 4th, I believe, for the joint construction team committee deep dive, and then to schedule another budget discussion prior to the vote on the 3rd, if that is possible to do. And I also share the concerns that Mr. Sipini shared regarding equity in regards to programs like the National Honor Society. Thank you.
So the vote is currently scheduled right now for June 4th. Would it be amenable to the board if we added a JCT deep dive on, or JCT update as part of the conversation on the 3rd? Alternatively, we could, school board members could go to the JCT meeting, you know, this Thursday or next Thursday as well, is another option.
Just to clarify, we are already planning to do a JCT update on June 3rd, so which should have the latest information on the latest estimates based upon the bid packages having come back and so on and so forth.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, I mean, so long as we can, so long as we don't shortchange that conversation, I mean, I just think, at the risk of saying the obvious, it merits a lot of deliberation, because what I what I want this board to do, and why I don't respectfully think it would be sufficient to just attend the JCT, is I think we need to, I think candidly, from some of the information that I've been provided, we're going to be forced, whether some of us want to or not, we're going to be forced to adopt some new value engineering proposals that to date perhaps this body has not heard about, just because the costs are exceeding even what was previously anticipated or projected. So if we have, so long as we allocate a heck of a lot of time on June 3rd at that meeting, I'm okay with that. But I do think it needs to be this body essentially sizing up some different options or alternatives to how to reduce the cost, one, and two, I do think because of that conversation, it's going to, it's going to require a lot of time. I don't think, for example, I don't think that this is a 30-minute conversation. That would be my assessment.
Ms. Gibson?
My other request, too, would be that the architect attend that meeting whenever it is scheduled.
All right, well, that seems like my, what I'm seeing, but feel free to speak up, to allocate, so that we allocate some time on June 3rd for this discussion. Mr. Young, it seems like you have a good perspective on what you want to cover there, so if you can give some feedback there, if anyone else has any additional thoughts in regards to June 3rd, and we'll take it from there. I have just a quick update. One of the HR actions includes, very sadly, the death of a teacher at Hill, Brenda Kemp. So I would just like to, I know she was a teacher that was valued by many, and her her passing took a lot of people by surprise, and it really was hard on the community, so I just wanted to see if we could take a moment of silence in honor of Ms. Kemp. And if anyone would like to, in lieu of flowers, you can make a gift to Virginia University in our honor, so if we could just take a moment of silence. Any other updates? We need to go to close. Do you have any announcements? I don't care.
Pursuant to section...
Collins neighbor?
Aye.
Any vote? All right, if you're not voted.